We haven't started yet. I'm just waiting for the. Boot up. The board of commissioners, we welcome each and every one of you here and as well as those who are speaking virtually this morning. We do have a full room and that's encouraging today because the topics are certainly of interest to the county and its residents. Unfortunately, our chairman, Chairman Vaughn texted me early this morning and asked if I would fill in as vice chair. He's, he would like to be here, but he decided not to come so that he wouldn't. Perhaps spread what he may have, which is probably what everyone has in their family at one point or another right now. But anyway, he is absent, so I'll be chairing the meeting this morning. He will be with us virtually. And as requested, if we need any information at the board, we can always call upon him at that point. So appreciate that. So with that said, I'll call the meeting to order at eight oh six and we'll have our roll call about clerk Fettig.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Commissioner Barrios.
Here.
Commissioner Bardwell.
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn is absent. Commissioner Lutz.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
You have a quorum. You may proceed.
Okay, thank you. Clerk Fettig. So the first item on our agenda this morning. Is discussion on hiring freeze for the county. Erica Deville, our controller administrator will be presenting.
Good morning. As requested by Commissioner Vaughn, as well as the rest of the commissioners. I found some research regarding our history of the hiring freeze. So that is in your packet. It looks like we have done so a few times in the past. I am unclear if we need to put an official hiring freeze on as each department already comes to the board for approval of each new hire. However, if we did put a hiring freeze on, that would at least prevent the department from going through the recruiting process. So it would save some of their time if we do not plan to fill the said position. So I'm open for discussion and guidance from the board.
Any thoughts, board members?
Well, if we're going to have a hiring freeze, we ought to. Document it and specify that any hiring will be done on a. Per. Approval basis on. My opinion.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Twenty-two. According to what you, correct?
Yes.
I think if we as a board feel that way, we should get a resolution ready for Thursday. My opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I think I agree with Matt. I think Mr. Book.
Clerk Fettig, would it be best as a resolution or a motion?
Motion should be sufficient. That's how we normally will handle this in the past.
Yeah. No, that's. That's fine.
That's okay.
So in the past, when we had a hiring freeze, it typically meant that. As occurs now, we just said, Erica, that those who want to hire someone and replace someone come in front of the board. The problem then and now when we do this is that between board meetings, it really sets up. They have to wait until they get the approval, then they go out. And depending on the nature of the position or if they're refilling or something along those lines, somebody's left. That's always a problem, but just as a note, that's typically what we experienced in the past, but yet. We did work our way through that, but in terms of. The type of situations that we faced, we always appreciate the elected and appointed coming to the board and. Laying out the reasons and the needs before we make a hiring decision. So. If it would pleasure the board, we'll put that on as a motion prepared for our next board meeting. Anything else you'd like to ask?
Commissioner Bardwell.
Yes.
If I may, to be clear, you would like the motion to say before any advertisement for the role, any type of recruiting activity, correct? So before a position, once it's vacant, they need to come to the board for taking any further steps.
Well, speaking and board members speak up, it's one hundred. I think that. It's probably the most appropriate, although it is somewhat of a hindrance. If you go through the higher, you go through the search process and you get a candidate and then you come to the board, it really doesn't do justice to the individual that. Isn't the timing? I mean, that's my only thought.
And the department would be wasting their time and resources. So I just want to be clear before I help you with the motion, what you'd like it to say.
Proceed with that as mine.
Thank you.
Start of the word. All right. Thank you. That's item one. Item two, new radio consulate expenditure and Carrie Tabar, the deputy dispatch director will be presenting this morning.
How's that?
Morning.
All right. So I'm here to help Carrie.
Right.
Just gonna throw this out there and I'm gonna answer questions hopefully. So go ahead.
All right. So we have a new consulate that we need. Research has been done. The back and forth on it came down to a new one will cost ten thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars, thirty-three cents with the two hundred and fifty dollar installation. So we were requesting that that be approved. We can purchase them.
So we looked at repairing the existing one. That part is obsolete. I was able to find that part online. I'm just unsure if I can get anybody to actually do the repair. And then, uh, once we got the quote for the new radio after finding out how much it actually was, I think it's a better option of to spend the money and buy the new one. At this point.
Chairman. Yes. Commissioner. Is this gonna be fit for the encryption?
Yes.
It will.
Yep.
General. We have that in nine-one-one and dispatch.
Yeah. So looking at the existing budget right now, I'm looking at the equipment repair and maintenance. Which is the nine thirty, nine thirty-two line item. There's fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and three dollars and seventeen cents in there right now.
Yeah.
Fifty-eight, two oh three, seventeen. We're gonna hit it a few times here. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Heard the comments, questions? Just the consulate, is that in front of one operator or is that?
Nope. So this is actually for a backup and Carrie can explain that a lot better than I can.
In the event there was a radio issue, these backup channels, we can switch to those and work off of them. We can page as well as change to the channels that we need. Using those, there's currently four, three, with the absence of this fourth one, and we do need it.
And from your perspective, Steve, once again, just to restate it, it's. You believe it's a gutter for the county to replace the consulate rather than try to find a repair part and.
Yeah. So I've been talking to ProCom about it. Like I said, it went to Motorola once. The part is obsolete. Motorola does not have it in stock. I did a Google search of it. I found it. It's about a thousand dollars. I'm talking with Tyler at ProCom. Like Tyler explained, they don't do any repair works in the shop anymore. Everything goes Motorola. They do all the repairs. He's like, he has one person that's left from that era. But we don't know what this part is. If it's a simple plug-in thing or if it's a, we have to take the motherboard apart, solder stuff. So Tyler's like, I don't feel comfortable telling you we can fix it when I don't even know what it is. So.
You mentioned from that era. Are these, are testing equipment that outdated?
No, I mean the era from like back in the day when they used to do repairs rated into shop.
Okay.
So, and that hasn't happened for quite a while. So.
Placing the board. Can we put that on a consent agenda? Place your board for on the consent agenda, purchase and consulate. That's pretty much covered in your budget. All right. Bear that for. The board meeting, next board meeting. Moving on, we have a request from the same uninterrupted power source. He asked Erica, Carrie Taylor. Carrie Tabar, deputy dispatch director, if there's anyone scanning.
So we're actually gonna refer you to Ian on this one. He can help explain this one.
So the. Power module for this was serviced, part of our regularly scheduled service plan. And the technician found this to be seventy-five percent utilized, which is above the fifty percent threshold. That would mean that if this tower module were to be completely. Were to die, it wouldn't be able to function on its own. So the idea of being very smart is plus one, we are able to operate on a failure and then replace or build a part. We won't see any interruption. That's continued upon generator, which I assume from what I understand is issues with the generator, so I advise that this part could be replaced post-ABC. So that generator is there.
All right. Any questions for Ian or for Carrie or Steve?
What about the generator, chairman?
Personally, I don't have any information on that.
So there was an issue with the generator. There was alarm that sounded in the interior. Cause I'm gonna mic and be best way to explain it. Seeing low engine coolant, Carrie got a hold of Brideway Cummings in Saginaw. They found out the block heater was too small. They came out last week to repair that. We think it's fixed.
Hasn't been an alarm since.
And it should fire up at nine o'clock for its morning or weekly test. So knock on wood, hopefully it fires up. So.
And that was covered under warranty, so no additional costs.
Thank you, Steve and Carrie. Any other questions? Pleasure, the board. On a consent agenda? Looking under consent agenda or?
Consent agenda?
Consent agenda will be.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And the next item, which is number four, if you're following along, unsolved, unsolved renewal, Carrie Tabar, deputy dispatch director will be. Presenting.
This is a cost. That is recurring renewal. Total cost is seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and seven cents. We are going to ask at the authority board today at the meeting to decide if we have to keep this. If it's required, but we may have to. It's a recurring service, so it might be too late to cancel. We will evaluate that, what we may have to fulfill the payment. That would be discussed this afternoon.
All right. So more of informational purposes.
Yeah, at this point until we make a decision what we want to do. So.
Okay.
So shall we just place this on the agenda for Monday for further discussion? Will you be ready by then, do you think? We shouldn't be.
It should be hopefully.
Okay. And then if not, we can always postpone it. But, okay.
So the next thing is that I believe it to be a Motorola renewal. Carrie got an invoice for twenty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars. Going through the board motions and board history. For last year, there was a similar motion, the exact same amount for a service contract with Motorola for the software. So I'm assuming it's the same thing. I asked, Erica's looking into to see if there was a contract that got emailed in that we didn't get. So. I'm ninety-nine percent sure that's what this is, but once we get the, we do get that solidified, I'd like to get this paid. We need to do this by December. Let's do the first of January. So. So I don't know if we can do a consent agenda pending the actual contract. It might actually be a reoccurring contract as well. We're not sure.
We could do this.
I would recommend a board.
Twenty-second.
Yeah, or the fifteenth or the twenty-second.
I mean fifteenth, I'm sorry.
If it's pending something, let's do it as a regular.
And it might be here. We just, we have to kind of find it with the changes that have been in this bill. So.
Since there's more information coming.
I hope so. There should be an actual contract somewhere with it, but we don't have that piece yet.
And we're looking into that. I'm having Angie research to see, was it signed by Commissioner Vaughn and in our records? Or not.
I would just recommend a Thursday agenda item rather than consent agenda then.
Agreed.
You mean Monday, but yes.
Or Monday. Yeah, sorry. Have it. Yeah.
So that's another FYI, I guess then. And then the last one is a sentrotto invoice.
We're at four years or year four of five and this payment is for eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty cents. And that's actually due. It is due January first also. And that's for our, our phone system.
Questions for Carrie, Steve and the board? Like the board put on the consent agenda? Just, just out of curiosity. Oh. All five of these are coming in December. Is that normal?
I can't answer that yet.
I, I believe it's probably gonna be normal.
Normal? I was just curious.
They appear to be service contracts for the upcoming year.
All right. Anything else, Steve and Carrie? Nothing from the board. Thanks. You worked again or presented again. Look forward to you once again come back in the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven, sheriff's new hire request for Jessica Gordon and Robert Baxter, the undersheriff, will you present? Well, no, it's not.
Robinson. Yep. He's here virtually. I'm in person. I figure I just come up and do this. We extended an offer to Jessica Gordon for the full-time vacant position on the road patrol. She passed her background drug screen, psychological testing. She's set to start the January twelfth academy at Delta College at the step one rate. And we did apply for a grant from the Public Safety Academy Assistance Program to offset those costs.
This is all covered under the road patrol village?
Yes.
How many are you down now?
Uh, well, there's one at the academy now and then January, including her, we're sending three.
Three more?
Yeah. So that, that would bring us to full staff, but we never know if anyone's leaving. So.
Well, initially it sounds good.
Yes.
You have candidates.
Yes.
Any comments or questions for Ryan from the board? Do we have to do a motion on that?
Yeah.
You want it as a regular motion?
Yeah.
Paramotion for the next meeting. Anything else, Ryan?
Um, the only other things I'd, that I'd mention is if there's a possibility of a hiring freeze. Obviously, my office, the millage positions, the, the safety required positions, dispatch, obviously they're extremely shorthanded. There are certain offices that, that for emergency response need to be filled. So I hope that would be considered as well. That's, at this point, that's all I'm gonna say on that, but I just, I hope that everyone understands some of those positions can't possibly be frozen from trying to hire those vacancies.
The board, if I may just chime in here just a moment, typically when we had a hiring freeze in the past and do that, do all the history you'd like. It never prevented such positions to be filled. It was more or less to be more aware at the board level, conscious. And, you know, allow the board to ask questions. So typically those type of positions. Even though we have a hiring freeze, each one is, is brought to the board and case by case, as I recall from the past, and that's how the board decides.
And that's what I had hoped. I didn't remember from back then. So.
Yeah. Well, thank you for reminding us. And sharing that concern because that is a definite shared concern. But thank you once again for coming in.
Thank you. Thanks.
That completes the new business this morning. Now we're gonna move into the old business. And we have four items on the agenda this morning. The first one is agreements for shared use of Tuscaloosa County building located at three sixty-two Green Street. And Erica Deville, our control administrator, will bring us up to date on that.
Good morning. The EDC has requested use of our building, shared use with our MSU extension office. I've been working with them to come up with an agreement that is. Equally fair. So including. Providing proof of their liability insurance, who's responsible for what. So I have the draft agreement in there. I did run this. Again, I work hand in hand with Mr. Jim Tussi. So I believe that he's in agreement with this. I don't know if he's here. Or any EDC representative. No. Okay. So however, via email, he said that he was agreeable to the, so if the board would like to move it to next Monday, I'm, I'm happy to have him come back. Or we can approve it pending. I guess not pending. We can approve it for signatures and ask him to come in and sign.
Comments or questions from the board? I would think Commissioner Cook would be in order to do that, only in the sense that we've got the insurance covered with.
We have not received a copy of his insurance, but the agreement states that they would be providing us that annually.
So it would be pending receipt of the liability insurance.
Yes. The only, the real questions would be when is the effective date of said agreement?
And do you think that you could talk to Mr. Cus between now and the next board meeting to resolve that? And if not, we just. We'll carry it forward. But what do you think?
Yes, I'm sure I can. They are currently. Using the building on occasion. They're using the boardroom with, you know, I don't believe they have keys to the building. MSUE will allow them in to use the boardroom when needed. They don't have a dedicated space as of yet. Included in the agreement is if they did want to do modifications, they, they would have to follow all the county policies and procedures. So I know they were talking about some of that, but they would have to follow the guidelines set forth for all other departments as well.
Thank you for that update. I did just check to see the next EDC meeting in that building would be the sixteenth. This is Tuesday next week. All right. So the pleasure of the board is great promotion if there's enough efficiency on the liability and effective date. Otherwise, we'll carry it forward. Any other question? Done. We'll move on to item number two, review and discuss the pool cars. Once again, Erica Deville, our control administrator will be presenting.
As requested, I provided a list of all of the vehicles that are currently on our insurance. Now, this, what, this list is from our renewal from twenty-four to twenty-five. Some vehicles have been replaced since then. However, you also note that the department, some of them say. DPW, those are. Either mosquito abatement trucks. Some of them are. Other departments that our insurance does not have a category to fill. So if they did not have a specific category to match our department, they put it in the DPW. So if you see that category. Don't, you know, don't worry. It's not that we're insuring DPW vehicles. Now, there has been the question regarding the pool car that was totaled. So the discussion is, do we want to replace that vehicle yet or are we still holding? I'm okay holding. Again, because the equalization vehicle is typically used, it's a pool car, but it's typically used in the summer. So for the winter months, we're okay to not replace the pool car because we can use that one. However, I did reach out to MMRMA regarding. If an employee were to use their own personal vehicle to go to a conference or. Run the mail to the courthouse and there was an incident, how would that be handled? So they advised that the employees' personal auto insurance would be primary. And then our insurance would be secondary. So I don't know about. Most employees, I would assume would prefer not to use their personal vehicle in that case. However, you know, on occasion, if I need to run. You know, if I need to run over to see clerk Fettig and there's no pool car. Taking my vehicle half a mile, I would be fine with that. However, if I was gonna go on a conference. And, and out on the highway, I would prefer to have a county vehicle. But that does come at an expense, obviously. But that does come at an expense, obviously. So I don't know if you want to make any decisions today, or if you just want to review the information that you requested and hold on that, uh, vehicle replacement until, we would need a vehicle preferably by end of first quarter. So just, so, um, equalization would have access to their vehicle when it comes time to do their assessing.
Any recommendation is?
My recommendation is to hold for a, a short time because we don't need to incur that expense today and see where the budget lands. Because, you know, we were, as you know, we're facing deficit. So I would say hold for a moment. Um, and then first of the year, we should start getting bids and quotes for a reasonable, uh, car that is, is good on gas. It doesn't need to be a you know, it doesn't need to be a fancy car. We had a Malibu or a Taurus before, or the, I mean, a Ford Focus before. The other issue is the drain truck. If we are considering that, then perhaps moving that truck to pool car, but that would be high fuel. So there's positives and negatives. It wouldn't cost us any money per se, because we would be moving that vehicle over. However, it's high gas cost for a truck versus a Ford Focus or a uh, GMC Terrain-type vehicle.
No, thank you. What? The board, have any thoughts?
I think we should wait.
Can we wait?
I think when, when, uh, Kara, uh, came before the board before, uh, she had a price and everything all set to go for a vehicle. I don't know if they still have that vehicle or not. But that was gonna come right out of her budget with the exception of like twelve hundred dollars or something.
That's correct. So the idea was, could we take that truck instead of receiving ten thousand dollars in on trade? Could we use that vehicle as a pool car instead of purchasing a new pool car? Right. However, I don't know as if that's really in the best interest. The other idea was to use that vehicle for animal control, because they also recently had an incident with the vehicle, and one of their vehicles is also totaled. So I asked the animal control director to, to come and review the vehicle, the drain vehicle. However, it has a six-foot box. And he already has a dog, um, a dog box that fits into the bed of a truck, so we wouldn't have to buy another one, and that's for an eight-foot box. So unfortunately, the idea what, to, you know, move the vehicle from one department to another to save the county money, take some of those funds from the totaled vehicle at animal control to use for the drain to be able to replace their vehicle, that will not work, unfortunately. So as for the drain vehicle, I figure we can discuss that in the budget, um, when we get to the finance.
Coming up.
And then potentially further discussion on Monday.
Any further thoughts on board? We'll hold, hold until we have further discussion. Alright. We'll set that one aside and hold for further discussion. Thank you for the update, though. Getting broader and wider as we.
Pardon me?
The updates are getting, uh, more breadth and depth to them.
Thank you.
Alright. Thank you for that, Erica. Next item is, once again, will be Erica Deville, a review of the cost allocation plan, the cap for twenty twenty-five with an analysis.
I did not get this in the board packet. So I have printouts for you. We will take one in packs, please. We'll take some citations here and that's to me. Thank you. You'll notice that there's, there's four items, two say twenty-six at the top, twenty twenty-six, two say twenty twenty-five. The twenty twenty-five I've provided you for information, so you can see how that compares to the twenty twenty-six. So the one with the blue highlight at the top that says twenty twenty-six is my review of the cost allocation plan presented last week. It says twenty twenty-six percent of indirect cost on special millages and other funds.
Wait a second.
Yep.
Where are we at? On twenty-five or twenty-six, sorry?
Twenty twenty-six percent of indirect costs.
Okay.
In addition, in the board packet are the previous motions that come into play regarding the cost allocation plan. There was one in July of twenty-one and one in November of twenty-one that dictates what our cap is. So the current cap for millage and dispatch is two point five percent of revenue for that millage. Now, in the past, it looks like it was budgeted on, or excuse me, the number was based on budgeted revenue, not actual revenue. So we followed the same path. And in the center, the tan with red is what that works out to be. Now, there are a few items of question. One is at the bottom, the ones that are non-millage. So we have friend of the court, and we have health department. So those are currently not capped. You'll see the difference between twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, and those ones is significant. So while I understand the need to reallocate some of our shared funds back to the general fund, we're capping the millage, but we're not capping some of the other services. So I wanted to bring that to your attention because the friend of the court, I don't know if they should be bearing the burden of all of the cost allocation with no cap. Now, you'll see that the percent calculation from the prior years is, or from the prior year, is the other one that says twenty twenty-five percent of indirect costs. If we look at what MGT is recommending, I have a percentage of that. Some of them, they're recommending, their recommendation is less than uh, the cap, and others are recommending more than the cap. I agree with the cap. We don't want to overburden our millage funds either. But I think there should be some sort of equitable cap for the other funds, such as health department, as well as friend of the court. That's my opinion. Obviously, that's up to the board. Also, we don't currently, um, we do not currently do a cost allocation on every fund. For example, primary road, voted primary road. We do not do a cost allocation. We do for road patrol, but not primary road as well as voted bridge. Now, that could be because the road commission is taking on those costs. So the shared services that the other departments are paying for, right, the, the use of the treasurer's office, use of my office, IT, maintenance, those funds do not have those fees. Right? Because there, those are paid through the road commission. So that is perhaps why that is. However, there's no documentation as to why. The motion says all voted millage. So is it all voted millage, or is it some voted millage? So I presented you with all voted millage.
A lot of information here.
There is.
Commissioners Lutz and and Cook and Barrios, are there any questions just far?
Chairman, can we get information on what was specifically, um, discussed when this was all put in place? Do some research.
Clerk Fettin, you and I were there.
We were.
You were. And, um, I'll just share what I remember. When you're asking for further information, it might be just this motion. I'm not sure uh, if there's any notes, minutes.
I don't, I can't recall if there was any handouts provided to the board at that time.
That's twenty twenty-one. But from the intent of Commissioner Grimshaw at that time and, and the late Commissioner Durrussell, I believe it spanned all voted millages. I don't remember segmenting anything out, segregating anything out at that particular time. I think that was a much easier motion then. Uh, obviously, with, uh, they didn't have the deficit in front of them, and we didn't at that time, and so that's what it was, and it's been that way since twenty twenty-one. Now, whether going in the future, should it be that way? You raised some interesting questions about the courts, shouldering of Austin. And, uh, I'm sure there's some others that you could point out.
Yes.
How do we make this equitable? And sharing that with the other commissioners, so that, I mean, that was my thought. How do you make it equitable, or, or is it, uh, stay as if, because it is a motion, but motion can be meant to change, um, a new motion, but what are your thoughts going forward?
You indicated that your, uh, perception was that it was all when that motion was made. Yet, it's not all when we look at this breakdown.
Correct. Okay, look at the motion. It says special voted millage, you cap. That was, that was the motion back in twenty-one.
So the definition of special voted millages would have been those ten, probably. You know, recycling was the big topic at that time, as I recall. Are you remembering anything, Conprary?
I am not. I do believe, um, I would have to look back to see what millages were being discussed at that point. Um, to determine what was, having the percentage taken out of the millages then, I do not recall if primary road was under that, or if it was just the remainder. And maybe the motion, um, assumed to just use the millages that were currently having the indirect cost taken out of them. I don't recall the primary road necessarily being discussed specifically. My inclination would be that if, that their intention was whatever special voted millages had indirect cost being taken out of them at that point, that that motion would apply to those ones. If there was a millage that was not having indirect cost, I don't recall them, the board adding any additional. So I would, that would be my question, is what was, what special voted millages were being hit with the indirect cost at that point? And I believe the board's intention at that was to continue with those. I don't recall them wanting to add any new ones. Um, and I believe that that was the intention of the board at that point was to not fund the county on special millages. The special millages were, are voted for by the people from, from Commissioner Grimshaw, from, I remember him capturing and Commissioner Bardwell, correct me if I'm going down the wrong path, but I believe his intention was to fund the special project that the voters have voted to fund and not fund the county from that special project in which the voters had not voted for. And I think that that was his argument from what I recall, Commissioner Bardwell.
Well, I concur, uh, Clerk Fettin, wholeheartedly, in the sense that you've explained some of the more detail, especially in funding the county and some of the concerns then of, um, that we had at that time, and that certainly rings true. I think that pretty much, uh, is the, um, circumference of the, of the question, what it was pertaining to, and I think that pretty much lies embedded in that previous motion there of twenty twenty-one. I think the question is, Commissioner, is, is we still don't want to, uh, fund the county with, uh, the special millage funds. I mean, that Clerk Fettin said, voted by the people for the people to use for those particular services. And that's all we can use it. This is the only thing I think we can tap out, you can take out of it is administrative fee, so to speak, or along those lines. So realistically, um, given what, uh, Erica's control administrator has presented, your thoughts, Erica, on what would be the benefit in terms of some of the questions you have of altering, or redefining this? What, what are your thoughts?
Well, redefining would help specifically our office in the future, right? So we know exactly what funds we're going to be, um, charging the administrative fee to. Um, defining that for future controller administrators would be great. Um, there are costs associated with, you know, the process of the millage, so I'm okay with the small amount, like the two point five percent. I think that's reasonable. However, I guess we need to have a further discussion with the road commission about what their, you know, are they, how, how is that happening on their side? Because we don't want to us charge the voted road, uh, uh, administrative fee and the road commission charge administrative, right? We want to make sure that it's, it's one, one fee. We're not double dipping. Um, however, I know with the, the non-millage, like the court, the friend of the court, and the health department, some of those fees are able to be refunded back when they, when they supply their documentation of expenses to the state, they can get some of those monies reimbursed. However, I don't believe they can get all of that. For example, the friend of the court, you know, it, it's two hundred thousand dollars. So I think that that is quite high, and I think it's within our purview to change that and say, we're gonna cap that at a percentage of what MGT says we can, or we're gonna leave it as is, but with a cap, a hard dollar cap. Or you could say revisit that every year at budget time, determine what is that percentage of their overall budget. I just think two hundred thousand is quite a lot. Um, and then for the health department, um, there was an error in twenty twenty-five. So that is gonna be corrected on this year's budget. So they're at twenty-one thousand nine twenty-seven. I mean, that's not terrible. I don't know what their overall budget is to see what the percentage of that, what that is.
Commissioner Kirk?
Um, the first motion in July was to make it five percent. Then, four months later, it was voted to make it two and a half. What transpired during that four-month time period? Do you remember? I ask you to. I mean, I, I'm not saying I, you know, five percent or two and a half percent. I'm just wondering in a four-month time period, was the motion made to be five, and then we determined it was probably too high?
Well, I think it's, is this twenty twenty-one M two sixty, two eighty-five? Is that?
Uh, hold on.
The one below.
The first, yeah, the, the first one is the one in July, and the second one listed as the one in November.
The two point five, based on the motion, how I'm looking at that, was for recycling and, um, the dispatch indirect cost?
Just those two.
Just those two were reduced to two point five.
Okay.
Um.
But now we're having the discussion to reduce them all. But now we're having the discussion to reduce them all to 2.5.
Would you say that again, please louder?
Now we're having the discussion to put them all down to 2, 2.5. Correct or no?
I don't believe that that's the discussion necessarily.
I'm just saying there should be a cap for those non-millages.
Right here says two and a half percent.
Down to the, down to the pink. So it's my understanding that they're already, all the villages are capped. It says all voted in the motion on November 24th, 2021, amend the recycling and 911 and, and in the future years, cap all voted millage and 911 indirect costs at 2.5%.
So it is all. I was looking at the sentence before.
So to me, all means all.
No.
So that's how I calculated those. Now, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm inaccurate and you, that was not your intent back in 21.
No, that's what it's, that's what I interpreted the motion to say when I read.
Yeah, I read the second sentence. So I don't know if there was some. I don't remember that discussion necessarily to be off, so I don't know. I would have to look back a little bit further.
I mean, unless the discussion was, sorry.
Perceived.
Unless the discussion that in, in November 24th was about recycling and 911 and other departments said, well, why are we more than 200? That's where I'm confused.
At that time, and clerk cutting, this is going back, there was scrutiny on recycling and 911 in terms of the amount of attention that seemed to be reasonable and the items that were being tracked that MGT provided, most likely provided some kind of question at that point. I'm not so sure if those allocations are equitable or
accurate.
Yeah, based on what they actually, amount of effort that we do administrative wise. I think that's how we got there. I do remember that discussion. I do remember going through recycling. I remember 911. And that was also the time of 911 when the surcharges off the phone lines, the landlines were dropping. And so the surcharge money, it was coming from that. I, I wanted to circle around just because I'm, I see that on, if everyone has this but me, that's all right. But those up in the, in the boardroom here, the 26 indirect cost proposed is 511,000, right? Is that how I read that? And then the 25, was that, what, what was that? Was that 253? I'm on the wrong sheet. What did we allocate in 25 total indirect costs?
468,000. However, that did, that included the rent from the health department. So really 362.
Okay.
Because I did not include in my review of the cost allocation for 26, I did not include the health department rent because it's not a cost allocation, it's rent. So I, I separated those as they were, they were semi-separated on the journal entry, but I made it a little bit more clear. So part of that is, like I said, the increase to the front of the court, which went up significantly for 26. So if we just, with the five or the two and a half percent that I factored in primary road, I factored in bridges, which may not be accurate. We may need to remove those, but I included them in there for you so we could have that discussion today. When it says all voted millage, does that really mean all voted millage? Or all voted millage that we manage, right? Meaning the road commission is separate. And then the next question is, what do we want to do for a cap for the front of the court and, and the health department? So that would obviously impact that 511,000. And, and what's been done in the past, since this is my first year here as controller. So in the past, did you look at the cost allocation plan for front of the court and health department? And say, that's too much for this year only, we're going to make it, instead of 200,000, we're going to make it 120 or 150 and, and make that decision on a year by year basis? And if that's the case, that's fine. We can move, we can do that in our budget discussion. But I'd like to have for the record, how is this calculated? So we can move forward next year.
Chairman Bardwell. Isn't it that the county road commission, don't they do their own, they just bring it to this board to get it okay? Am I wrong?
They do bring, yes, they, they make a request for funds transfer and yes, they provide us with that, what they need. So again, if, if they're charging the 2.5% or whatever the allocation is, first we should verify that they're following our, are they supposed to follow our policies, the first question? Are they supposed to follow it? Two, are they? And three, if they are charging, then we shouldn't because that's double dipping.
Chairman. I think, I, I think we need to go back and clarify whatever, whatever the motion was that, and however it reads in 2021. I think going forward, I think we need to clean that up.
I would agree.
And, and make sure that it's, these girls have to go back periodically and, and check and we're asking them to look back on, on past motions. And if it's not clear, I think we need to take time and and clean it up.
Thank you, Commissioner Barrios. Any other thoughts on that? On a previous quest, previous question, were there any other reviews for the front of the court or the health one? If, if they were reduced, there would have been a motion and was suspended. Correct? I mean, that would be the first in which I don't know if we have one or it seems like it would have been in these motions, but it would have been between 21 and now at least. And I think there's merit in what you just identified here in terms of the clerk and the health department. And I think this is one of the situations we saw with, well, with others, 911 and others before it became a cap was that what's driving this? And so MGT was asked to supply the drivers. What are you counting? Drive copies or, you know, you know, it gets granular at times.
So they, they do maintenance, maintenance tickets, IT tickets, device counts, receipts in the treasurer's office. Our office, we have to break down our approximate time of how many hours we spend on A, B, or C. Maintenance does a similar thing. So that is their drivers. Now, are there flaws? I'm sure there are. You know, they're doing a, a look back a year later. So and again, you know, the device counts. They, they could be, well, this year they got a new computer, last year they didn't. There could be a device here or device there that's inaccurate. There could be a influx of my time for an event that I'm helping them with versus last year. But in overall, it's generalizations, it's, it's a capture and that, that moment in time is what they're looking at. So.
And it sounds like it's being driven by requests. I mean, the paper copies, it's just a matter of.
Yes.
So some of it's being driven internally by requests, whether it be IT or maintenance and amongst others. So if you did review these two, what would you be looking at for justification for a reduction?
I would look at their overall budget as well as is it reimbursable as well? Because for example, with the court, so we give, we allocate funds to the front of the court in the beginning of the year. They can't, they cannot send in the documents to the state unless there's an expense on their books. So we, we charge the expense that then they can then send that to the state. So I don't believe we should wipe out those expenses. However, I think it should be more equitable and we should, we should determine what percentage of their budget should we be charging based on our time? We can look at the cost allocation plan and say, overall, their, their time is 5%. Their time is 5% of the cost allocation. So maybe that means we, we make sure we have 5%. So there's, there's multiple factors that need to be reviewed. But with your permission, I can take a deeper dive and start, you know, working with them and seeing what is fair and equitable and bring you back some options. But I didn't want to spend the time doing that if that was already discussed in the past.
Commissioner, question.
Commissioner Barrios.
You mentioned the health department having an error in the prior years. Yes. Can you tell me about that?
Um, it is, it appears that they were charged IT services when in reality they have their own IT department. So we did not, I don't know if it was my office or MGT. It, it was not caught. And so that was charged to them in 2025. So we're going to make that correction.
So that's why theirs is considerably lower.
Lower, yes. But it's still 21,000, which is still
21.
A decent amount of money.
So from commissioners, if I could just try to summarize, it may not sound like it. We, we're projecting a 511 for 26 and we, we had a 468. It's a $43,000 difference. It's about a eight plus percent increase. Commissioner Cook, you're good at math with that. So what you're advocating is that if we did review the front of the court and the health department, it'll reduce the proposed indirect costs for 2026, correct? I mean, it's not, and it's going to be somewhere in that $43,000 difference probably. So we're really talking 4% or 5%? What do you think, Commissioner? All right. Any further thoughts? Commissioner Lutz.
I think we ought to give her a deeper dive to see what's going on really.
On those two?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then come back. Commissioner Barrios.
Yep.
Give us some thoughts on that. That's what we did with recycling and and then one at a time. When would that be ready for review?
Well, the goal would be by Monday because that's when we have to approve the budget or.
Yeah, that's true. Okay. Any other thoughts or questions on the indirect costing? A good discussion, covered a lot of years. And we do want to make it fair and equitable to the departments and realistic. So we're not capturing funds that we shouldn't be capturing, but still capturing goals when we do provide services. All right. So that was number three. Anything else on that? Very, very good review. Number four on the old business is 2026 budget development calendar, proposed amendments. And Erica Dibble, our control administrator, will be reviewing that with us as well.
I added the changes that we discussed at the last board meeting, which was adding today as the draft review as well as changing the board meeting from this Thursday to next Monday for the final review. And then the notice deadline is December 10th. I already have sent that into advertiser for the December 22nd public hearing. And they did confirm receipt. So it will be published on the Wednes, on Wednesday, December 10th. Yes.
Any questions or comments?
Do you need a motion to adapt your changes, Erica, on the consent agenda or?
Yes, please. I think that would be wise.
Okay. Is that okay with you, board, to add that to the consent agenda?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
So that includes the old business. Moving forward, we have finance technology. I'm normally the finance leader on that. Of course, Commissioner Cook would like to take that over.
Do that.
Would you like to do that?
Yeah.
All right, then.
Under the, anything for technology?
Welcome.
Thank you. Under finance, board review, third draft, 2026 budget, Erica Dibble, control administrator.
I just handed out 2026 all funds. Again, this is only the top level, the fund opening balance, opening fund balance, expected revenues, expected expenditures and proposed ending fund balance. So that is up to date with our current information. It shows a, still shows a deficit of 750,000, which is in the general fund only, which is 4.37% of the expected expenditures. Now, obviously, if we make changes to the cost allocation plan assignments or caps, that will impact because those, those funds are reimbursing the general fund for the costs of the shared services, right? So if we reduce those, that deficit will increase. So that means that we may have to save more money somewhere else. So the other funds, you'll see they're listed, some of them do show currently the preliminary ending fund balance is a def, is in a deficit. I noted some of those. Some of those are on a different fiscal year, so we're reviewing to make sure that the fund balance is accurate. We will make adjustments before Monday, next Monday, as well as the Parks and Rec. So their grant has not been received. It's been approved but not received because it's reimbursing. So potentially, we're going to do a budget amendment in 25 to say that revenue is now going to be received in 26 as well as the expenditures. So it really will not be in a deficit, but we have to clean up 25 to make 26 accurate. Now, in addition, I provided, I provided a list of changes. That's the second handout. So this shows you by fund what the changes in expenses or changes in revenues have been throughout this budget process. Now, I have asked departments if they'd like to come forward and discuss their budget, that they can do so. I gave them an opportunity to select a time that they could have. And I know we are a little bit past and I apologize on that. But the first one who signed up is Parks and Rec. So is Michael Kleinsmith still here? Well, I want to see if the board is ready for that or if they have questions for me, but I wanted to make sure that you were here.
I'm ready.
You ready?
Oh, I know why you did.
I'll take it back.
No, no, that's fine.
Are you ready? I noticed, I think that was permission of 754,000, 4.3%. And that's out of the general fund. Just for.
Apologize. I had to make sure I had the most up to date one in front of me.
No, that's, we want that.
Yes, thank you.
So the 754 is 4.3. I mean, that's, that's what's remaining out of that 1.9, it went down to 900. You've got a list of changes there. Just for framing this in, the your thoughts on the 754, 915 to get it down to zero? Do you have some options for that?
Well, I think it would be in our best interest to ask the departments to reduce their budget. So I would not say 4.37% because that's too, cutting it too skinny. I would say, you know, 7%. I would say, you know, 7%. If each department could cut their budget 7% and let the departments have that ownership. I did talk to some of the department heads, um, and they would prefer to have that control if, if you allow. Um, one of the things, um, I know that is not on here is some departments, especially like Clerk Fettin, has an option of a way to save the general fund some money by, um, allocating some wages to a different fund that's within her scope. So that's a great idea. So that has not yet been budgeted correctly yet because we are just in that discussion. So other departments have great ideas like that. Um, for example, uh, our treasurer in the past, right? She has some of, some of her, um, foreclosure specialists. Her wages are now being billed to their foreclosure fund instead of the general fund. So that is helping the general fund. So this is a similar, uh, method with the clerk as some of her staff's wages can be charged to a different fund to save the general fund. But obviously, we have to make sure that it's allowable per that fund. We can't just shift, we can't just shift expenses because we're, we're broke. We have to make sure it's within the scope. So we do have some ideas of things like that, and I'm working with departments. So before we get aggressive and say we have to have, you know, FTE reduction, we're hoping that we can work with the departments. If we said each department has to cut 7% or 10%, that would get us where we need to be.
My question, as my office is being discussed right now, will what I'm offering be included as part of that 7 to 10%? Are you gonna ask me to go above and beyond another 7 to 10%? Because I've already come forward with.
I think that would be included in your 10, in your.
I would hope, but that wasn't clear, so I'm just.
Right.
Trying to clarify that, you know.
Right.
For those department heads, because I believe that there might be more than just myself that have been proactive in their budget. Um, I would hope that we wouldn't be asked to cut additionally if we've already adjusted some of that.
Chairman? Well, thank you for the clarity, and the question is very, very applicable at this point in time because obviously, we want everyone to take a look at that and not be chastised for bringing up a suggestion that may not be included. But on the other hand, I was just interested on the basis of the board's knowledge that the options you have, and obviously, one is, uh, somewhere between 7 and 10%. Were there any other options that you were thinking about?
That is my best option.
That's the best one out of, out of the.
The other option, you know, is not gonna be a positive one, right? There are, you know, definitely FTE reductions, but that, to me, is worst-case scenario. If, if there's a way, you know, and if a department says, you know what? I know that, um, Suzie's gonna be retiring. Maybe we're not gonna be replacing Suzie. Then that, again, is a, is a reduction for next year. It might not be the full amount. If, if Suzie's gonna retire in, in June, well, that department could work with me and say, okay, we're gonna not fill her position. How much would that save us? Right? So $60,000 employee does not cost us 60,000. It really costs us more like 100,000, right? So half of that, $50,000 reduction to their budget for next year. So I have met with departments last week, and we, we more went through, are you sure on all of these items? Is there any way you could reduce? What can we do? What can we do? And I think at this point, now that we have that number, I think we'll have to have those deeper discussions, say, okay, everybody needs to figure out a way to save. And that could mean like Clerk Fettin. You know, Clerk Fettin said, well, some of the wages could be charged to a different fund. Great, that's, you know, $20,000 savings. That's $20,000 savings to the general fund. As long as it doesn't obviously put that other fund into a deficit.
So, uh, let me ask you another question.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I got, I got questions.
You have questions?
Yeah. So you're saying 7% across the board?
At, at least. I, I mean, we're at 4.37% right now. That is before you've made a decision on the cost allocation. So if you reduce some of those, some of the cost allocation, if you cap the health department, you cap the friend of the court, we don't do road, we don't do bridges, that's gonna impact that number. That deficit number's gonna get higher. So I would say, let's not say we need, you know, you're short $5, you don't want to say, I only need $5. You want to say you need $7.5 because something else is gonna happen. I would prefer to be a little bit more cautious and say 7.5 for 10.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I'm good with that. Yeah. Thank you.
So taking, um, Commissioner Luth's lead on this, is the seven per, or 7 to 10%, is it above and beyond the 4%?
No, it would be encompassing that 4%.
Include the 4%. So basically, 4% were taken out, they'd have to get another 3 or something.
Correct. That would give us a, a few percentage, uh, points there of wiggle room.
Or six.
Right. And, um, you have to remember that labor negotiations have not been finalized yet as well. So the wages that are on here are based at zero. So if any of the unions have an increase, that's not factored in. Um, additionally, the health insurance. So I've been going back and forth with Gibson, and Shelley's been helping and giving me those numbers. Um, we do have a number that I used in the budget. It is positive. It, it is lower than anticipated. However, that includes use of some of that overage in the 678 fund. Um, so I'm planning to use the 678 fund, but that is, again, to be federally compliant as well because you're not supposed to have more than 60 days in that fund. 60 days of expenses. And our expenses are roughly 350,000 a month. So we should have 700,000 in there, and we have over a million. So the intent is to use the 678 fund to slightly offset the increase in health insurance so that each department only gets hit for a certain dollar value.
What is the 678 fund?
That's the health insurance fund. So how it works is we pay health insurance out of the 678 fund, and then departments are, are billed via journal entry based on the illustrative rate. And I could go deeper into that, but illustrative rate does not actually equal what the expenses are. So sometimes those, there are months where the expenses are less than the illustrative rate. So it builds a fund balance.
All right. The question I wanted to ask at the end of the last session of readings for the presentations are, is that when you checked with it for attrition, did you get a sense of a number that is possible?
I did not check for that yet. I said that that is something that I would do this coming week to say, okay, in your, if we're asking departments, let's just say 10%, we're asking everybody to save 10%, what's forecasted out in their department? If it includes somebody retiring, could they, could they not replace that person? Or replace them with a part-timer? What could we do to save their 10% in their department?
All right. I just wanted to check. And, and I know from a replacement standpoint and attrition that often when it comes back to the board, it's, it's out of necessity, and we have a minimum serviceable level issue we have to deal with in any respects that we've sort of, uh, cut FTEs for a long time. So I don't have a handle on what that minimum serviceable level is, but it just reminded me of how I'd be approaching this. All right, Commissioner.
Uh, Mr. Kleinsmith?
Good morning, commissioners. So, um, I did meet with Erica, I believe it was Thursday. We came and discussed our budget. We want to make sure that we're not spending all our fund balance. Um, we had some projects that we've been doing this last year. Some of these things, it looks like the expenses are gonna be in 2026 instead of 2025. So there is some just, some questions, just figuring out, we're not gonna double spend. It's just figuring out how to set the budget so that, you know, so that we're not, we're, we're within the budget. But some of these expenses, like, um, the cornhole that we just talked about like last month, we're talking about, um, um, site plan, that's, that's in progress, historical sign. Some of these things are in progress that are gonna go from 2025 to 2026. Um, over, overall, and we started the year with a budget, um, uh, fund balance of 29,000. So we are spending some of that to get some equipment and things in there, but we're not going to spend plenty that we do not have. So, um, so again, we, we were here Thursday. We kind of went through that, make sure that, that's, that happened. So I mean, I'm happy, I know we didn't get some of those numbers finalized yet because we're, we just gotta figure out where those expenses are coming. If they're gonna be December, or how to set that up, so.
Any questions? Thank you. Cindy Hughes? Anybody have questions for?
Commissioner, she is the friend of the court.
Yep.
Expert. So, so, um, do you have any questions regarding the impact of the cost allocation? And how that impacts and what she can get reimbursed for from the state versus not?
You should find out that for.
I was asking them if they have questions. We are discussing on, uh, potential putting a cap on the friend of the court's cost allocation. How would that, how does that impact your department? If they had questions, you're the person to ask.
So basically, a majority of my budget gets reimbursed by the state of Michigan, roughly 66%. If all of my cases are considered 4D, which 4D is basically, they ask for our services or they have services that they use from the state of Michigan. Majority of my cases are. We're, almost everybody is 4D in my office except for one person. Um, other than that, I get a majority. As you can see in my budget, I'm doing very well the last couple of years. Uh, I'm just here if you have any other questions. So the more money I spend, the more money I get back. So that's why I'm here.
Good morning. Uh, so the cost allocation plan, it's roughly a $30,000 increase from last year, is my understanding of what was, uh, assigned to the friend of the court. So the thing you have to understand about that is that the cost, the cost allocation plan, because friend of the court, as long as it's 4D, every dollar that you spend on friend of the court, you get 66 cents back. So, uh, the cost allocation plan is part of, of that. The thing that I want you to consider, though, is that typically, the way that the budget, we have, we have, um, a, a portion that you pay and then the portion that we anticipate being reimbursed for. And I think it's like 280,000. Correct. 280,000 roughly would be what your expense is this year for the friend of the court, the actual expense that the county, uh, sets for. So my, my only concern is if you redo, I, I mean, the cost allocation re- amount is you're gonna get reimbursed for all those dollars. And then there's the amount that it takes to, to, um, let's call it the county portion to run the office. So you just have to balance those numbers when you're looking at the cost allocation. Because when you reduce the cost allocation, you're gonna reduce the reimbursed amount. Um, so just for your consideration. And the other thing I wanted to say was, um, Cindy has worked really hard to balance that budget. You may recall that last year, we eliminated the, uh, court referee position. And Judge Thane has taken on the majority of that responsibility. Um, just absorbed that in her docket. And that was a significant FTE expense that was eliminated to, to, uh, balance that budget last year. Um, so I just want you to historically know that we've been doing the best we can do in front of the court to keep that, um, balanced, budget balanced, but also taking into consideration the advantage we have with the CRP reimbursement, to make sure that we're maximizing that. And every year, our friend of the court maximizes the, there's also a bonus reimbursement for the percentage of support that is collected and.
Performance.
Yeah, performance. So I don't, I like, they do it every year. Which, I mean, they really should be congratulated for that because it's a big deal and, and brings us more money back. Um, but they do it every year because they're fantastic. So, um, yeah, so there's that, too. So I just wanted to add those couple of things. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Just, just a, I don't know, question or comment. So if in 2026, if we allocated 202, 051 compared to 163, 077 from last year, this year, 2025, would that be a burden on the friend of the court budget? Since you are reimbursed anyway?
202 is what they're doing for, I have, I have the old one.
Yeah, sorry. 202, 051, and last year was 163, oh.
So that's the indirect. That's the indirect cost, okay. That's a lot of money.
Oh, I know what it is.
I, I'm, I'm gonna get a majority of that back, 66% of it, but it's, I'm still paying for 30, the county's still paying for 33% of it out of our budget, so.
That was just a question. I'm not saying.
Yeah. Yeah. It's just a huge jump for us eliminating the referee division and us eliminating the referee support staff. We've already eliminated quite a few positions in our department. And it's like, oh, it just won $30,000. That was a lot.
Do we have an idea what it was in '24?
Um, I do not have that handy.
I think it stayed about the same.
So if, when we look at, if we change it, I'm going back to this sheet. So there's 200, Erica, there's 202, 051 is 2.5% for 2026.
No. The 202 is 100% of what the, uh, MGT is recommending. Because they are not on, they, there's no cap in place for them.
So I, so I know we lose 40 if we went to the 202, or went back to the 163.
Right.
But on the same token, if 163, you guys paid last year and balanced your budget, that would be something we could look at, too. You'd be able to make with that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I just, I, you know, it's, it's kind of like semantics with the math. So, so you just wanna make sure that you're balancing it on both sides. So that's all.
And I wasn't saying for you to take 40% off. Basically, I was trying to get around to the question of, instead of 2.5%, which would be a heck of a lot less than 163, would that be something since you reimbursed? So basically, you know.
Trying to do the math in my house?
Well, there'd be no increase from this year. And if this year.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I'm.
We should be fine. We're not, man.
And I'm not saying we're gonna do it, but I just pose that question. That it's valid question.
So you'd be fine with the 163? That's what you're saying?
Correct.
Any other questions?
So on the 163, would you want to do a pro forma on that using the 163? Or would like to, where we'd like to go? What would be the next?
Well, I guess when we do all, when we're addressing this 2.5, keep that in mind. That wouldn't have to be a 2.5.
Right.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes, yes.
You're asking how it impacts the budget in, in real time?
Yeah, it's like 40.
It'll be 40 some.
$40,000 more.
Correct.
On the same.
Which would mean 40,000 left to the general fund, which is fine. I, I mean, again, I'm, I'm not saying that, that, again, we, we don't want the general, I'm not saying the friend of the court is funding the general fund. However, a cost savings to one department is a cost increase to another.
Correct. And, and what I'm saying is, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I, I just, I, I want you to balance the. the the cost allocation part with the amount that you're putting towards front of the court. So you know, if if it stays what it is, the amount that's, it's going to cost you to fund the front of the court is probably going to be a higher number. If it's reduced, then that number is going to be reduced because of the reimbursement. So you you have to balance those two things. Because it's like not a dollar for dollar. So if if you, if you do keep it at the the twenty five rate, you're not necessarily going to add forty thousand dollars to the general fund deficit.
Oh.
Because of the reimbursement and it will reduce the amount that the general fund is paying towards front of the court, so.
That was my question. It's more fair, I guess, for like a better.
Correct.
Rather than doing the two hundred.
So I mean, I I just want you to do it in a fashion that we're we're maximizing our sixty six percent. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
Or do you want, you want Carrie to go first? Nope, okay.
Hello, commissioners. Um as Controller Administrator Deble did state, um we have not had the opportunity to meet. I know her schedule's been very busy, as is mine. Um I have provided a couple of different avenues regarding um some cost savings to be able to impact the general fund. As well as I have provided some corrections regarding that, as I think there was some revenue that was not stated correctly in budget moving forward based on some of our early voting funds that will be expended this year. Um we pay the costs as the county upfront, and then those are reimbursed by the local jurisdictions. And I don't believe that the revenue was maybe listed correctly in the budget, and I've pointed that out to Controller Administrator um in order to make sure that those expenses were not impacting the bottom line. Because that does come out of the general fund and a negative impact because they really should be basically a wash in and out. Um I have not been able, you know, as I know Erica worked this weekend, um I've not seen the updated budget as to my impacts to be able to say what that is going to really look at. Um but I think it's important, you know, unfortunately, the budgets that I bring forth to you, especially with the elections, is a little bit of a sticker shock, and I understand that. Um a lot of that is not controllable, and that budget really cannot be reduced at this point. We're going into a very large election season. Um it's not a presidential, but it is a gubernatorial, so we are expecting um record turnouts again in twenty twenty six. And as I have presented to you in the past, um in twenty twenty two, there's been a constitutional amendment that then increases the workload, not only on the county clerk's office, but as well as your local clerk's office. I am very, very blessed that I have a very good team of local clerks. And they work really hard at implementing early voting seamlessly. But I can't do it with them, without them, they can't do it without me. Um so, you know, our workload within our office is going to increase this year. Um our caseload as to it relates to the courts, our number of jury trials, because we administer the jury questionnaires for district court and circuit court. Um that that stuff is there. As you know, we're a mandated office, so um what is a serviceable level may have different definitions from where your point, viewpoint to my viewpoint. But we have to have elections, we have to make sure that elections remain um secure. We have to, and to do that, you have to have manpower on the ground. I have to have knowledgeable staff. And I'm also extremely blessed with the staff that I have right now. Um I do have a long-term employee that will be retiring, so with the implementation of the hiring freeze, um I did not take advantage of filling that position um here in November so that that person could have training prior to losing a thirty-year employee. Uh because I know that we are facing budget woes. I am waiting to present that request to you until after the person is off from payroll, because she will have some vacation time, because I know that there's not money for me to have additional payout to that person. That puts us somewhat behind the eight ball, because this person would not now be able to start until into March. And we will be in full swing of election mode at that point. Um so, but it's, to me, I think that that is something for you to understand and consider as well as we move into this, that, you know, all of us maybe behind the scenes are doing things that you don't necessarily see forthwith on these numbers presented to you today. Um I lived through two thousand and eight. I can tell you that it was a very difficult time, and the county morale was extremely low. Um every department obviously was fighting for their own department. I don't blame any of them. I will, you know, it was my predecessor, um Clerk White at the time, living through that. I was a chief deputy at the time, or I think I was a court clerk at the time and became a chief deputy shortly thereafter, but um I will fight for my department as well, because I I, we all think that our, each of our departments is very important. Um I just urge you that as we are doing some of these cost savings, that you might not be able to see a twenty thousand dollar bill from everybody, you know, that that is taken into consideration. I also can, you know, urge you to be considerate of us taking a five to seven percent cut, that people are not just cutting um supply line budgets that we're then just going to overspend. And you have to just allocate at the end of twenty twenty six. So I can cut from my supply line, make it look really great as of January first. But as we know, costs for everything have increased. Um just the postage alone that we use in our office to me is just mind-boggling some days. And, you know, I think on an off-election year that our postage costs are going to go down, and it seems to just go up. And there are things that were required by law that still have to be snail mailed. Um and so some of those things are just part of doing business. Um definitely, I am, you know, look, it, I want to look at where we can cut. Um where we can be more cost savings. We are the fiduciary for taxpayer dollars, and I think that that is the hardest part of your job as sitting on that side of the table. Um I always have said that the clerk has a very interesting viewpoint, because we usually hear more of the budget discussions, because we spent four days a month with you. Um so we hear where some of those budget shortfalls are going to maybe come. We also hear where some of the expenses come to you um that you're approving on every meeting. So I think that, you know, sitting in that chair is beneficial um for the most part. But I guess I would open it up to you, because I haven't seen my revised numbers from the Controller Administrator yet to see if you have any questions, because I know I have some very large numbers out there. And that election is like a sickle. It's every, every two years, it gets really, really large. The off year, it goes a little smaller. Um but we still always have to plan for elections in the off year. Um this year, we did not have an August, and I believe that's the first election we have had a quote off um in probably six years, so.
Well said. A lot of history there in terms of expansiveness, the breadth and depth, uh what we call unfunded state. You and the treasurer probably have been the brunt of those, and I'm sure the courts have a little bit of that as well. But it's certainly, when past that cost, they mandate it, but the cost is borne by the counties. And that's what you're really talking about, is that not only is it hard to capture, predict, and know what you need to budget, but you're familiar with surprises. And I think from a budgeting standpoint, even if we make adjustments along the way, it's okay in the past when we could do that, but you know, today, it's always a struggle, and you're absolutely right. There's ways in every budget to, you identified one in supply line that that uh could be used, but I was encouraged, from the board's perspective, I was encouraged, that five and a half hour meeting that Erica and I sat in here with, and many of the other people, it was six-hour meeting, wasn't it, Erica? And it's very room-going with uh through every budget line item, uh every department, I believe, everybody was here. Uh line by line, everyone participated, everyone had an opportunity to look at each line and question, and they did cross questions. Which I thought was, of all the years, I've never seen that done. Then I congratulated Erica previously for that. Um and the fact that it, that the elected and appointed and others took advantage of that, because it really uh showed a great amount of interest and concern. And here we are today. Once again, in terms of what we're, where we're going and how we're going to go through twenty six. And if I may say, Commissioner Cook, I I think one of the things that's in the back of our mind, and we get this all these, wherever we're going, but what we're going to do it with, which has to be done before the end of the year, the top question I get on the outside is, how did you get to this point? I think that's a very valid question, because how did we get to this point? I think that's the, uh, something we need to look at after the first of the year, to take a look at where that expense and that revenue line, what what's happened? You know, how long was it coming? And and what are the uh, out of the of the increases, what's increased the most, what's causing this drive? But anyway. So I'm thinking that um from that point, pretty pragmatic, because it's it's not a Cliff Notes answer to anyone, but here we are trying to get to that point, and then we have to go back and explain. Everything lags, as you know, and from a finance perspective, and and um but it seems like uh the lagging has caught up with this. Even though we seem to be, uh, we thought we were doing the fiduciary uh perspective, we're doing the right things. Um Chairman Vaughn and the rest of the board have put a great deal of effort. Uh I know he has, and all the time he spends um considering ideas and asking questions. So um with that, Sir Fedding, I know you're just accolade much of what's in the thoughts and minds of all the other elected in terms of the uh staffing cuts and uh the impact that, if that came to that. Um because in two thousand and eight, we did go through what you just described in a major way, so uh I just wanted to add that, Commissioner Cook, background there, a request for the future, how did we get here? Up to this point, so.
Well, and I think three things came to mind as you were talking. So as you speak in reference to the courts and the chief judges standing or sitting right behind me, you know, we're experiencing some very different times with the thoughts of how the state court administrative office views court costs and the things that follow that. And one of the things that we've noticed in our office, because they have put many um things regarding our court cases at a public view, they're free to the public, where we used to generate twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars for those searches. And that has definitely been an impact, you know, so if you're saying, you know, that's not in my control, it's not anything that the clerks are just saying, oh, we're going to start getting searches away from, for free. That has came from the state. So, you know, unfortunately, when the first draft of the budget came, and I had to tell Erica, I'm sorry, you've got to take that line item and put it basically to zero. Um you know, that that's an impact that we're seeing as it has trickled down. Um you know, so again, a decrease in revenue that is out of all of our hands. You know, you can, as MGT presented a couple of weeks ago, they said to look at the costs that you're going, that you can charge for certified copy fees. And with the holidays, I haven't had a chance to, like, push some of those numbers together, but you can look at increasing the fees that we set for our vital record fees. You could look at maybe increasing that a certain amount, but we have to make sure that we are stayed underneath what the state charges. We can't go above that. You know, um and then you're impacting your residents. So if you say, okay, so is it an unfunded mandate to our residents there to say, oh, you need a copy of your birth certificate? Well, now instead of it being fifteen dollars, it's going to be twenty or twenty-five dollars. And is that a financial burden to some? And then do you need to then look at an indigent opportunity as well, because we do have some people, unfortunately, and it's very, very sad to my heart, they really don't even have the fifteen dollars to get a copy of their birth certificate. With the real ID requirement that has been implemented in order for folks to simply have a driver's license or a state ID card, there, the sunset has been pushed out, but folks need to have a, what's considered a real ID for the state. And in order to get that, they have to get a certified copy of their birth certificate. They have to get a certified copy of their marriage license. They have to get a certified copy of any divorce paperwork. Well, if you needed all three of that, you know, you're looking at a forty-five dollar cost to you just in order to comply with the real ID requirements. So we have seen definitely an increase in our office with those certified copy fees because of that. You can look at increasing that, and it is a way that maybe we can generate a few more dollars in revenue. But I also am concerned about the cost of that to our residents, because you know, we are not a wealthy county as it comes to our residents. And so it's something, is it something for you to consider? Yes, we can put some numbers to that, but I think we also have to consider the bigger picture to that. Um the other thing, and it would be a small increase, but we will be implementing after the first of the year, is opening up the opportunity to offer fingerprints to customers other than just our concealed pistol license customers. We offered that, it has been a generator of revenue. Albeit small, it's a generator. Um but in the same essence, it is a time and cost saver to our residents, because for any of our folks that needed a C, or fingerprints done for their CPL, they were having to travel to Frankham, Moof, Saginaw, Bay City, potentially taking another day off from work. And now they're able to make their application in our office and get their fingerprints done all in one day, saving them a trip as well as their time, which we all know time has an invaluable opportunity to it. So with that, and being able to open that up to school teachers, volunteers, and nurses, those other folks, it's not going to save seven hundred and fifty, it's not going to make that much money, but it is an impact. So you know, even though we may not be looking at ways to, in my office, I'll speak to, you know, we've implemented some opportunities for cost savings. We've also implemented some new sources of revenue to try and help offset some of that. And so again, I just ask that you look at the bigger picture when you're looking at these departments. Um before you move forward and ask for a flat cut across the board, which that may be the easiest and the simplest, but I think everybody is unique. Any other questions or comments?
Any questions?
No, I I would just like to make a comment that I I appreciate your forward thinking uh in looking at the big picture and considering our residents. Um and I know we're, it's going to be tough, it's going to be a tough, tough year. Um but ultimately, um we have a very poor community. Um and I think we have to justify our costs in order to make sure that those people can still get the benefits that they need. So I I commend you and your department for all the work that you're doing to expand opportunities and name and costs.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Carrie?
Thank you.
Good morning. So in looking at high-budget requests, this year is going to be one of the smallest requests I've had to this board in almost ten years. Um and that's on the capital request side, so two forty-four, two five-nine, five to be exact. Um and this is going to be a trend that we're going to see, and and we've talked about in the past, where moving to cloud computing is moving to cloud computing is no longer going to be a special move, it's going to be the norm. Where instead of capital projects, we're gonna be working on expense projects. No more assets. As our assets continue to decline, we're gonna try to get them to be replaced with cloud services rather than having some sort of asset. When in this year's request, I have five projects to ask for. One being a LED sign from the clerk's office providing information outside and before citizens even get to the courthouse. They receive information in the walk-up window of what's available, what times, especially if there's a courthouse closure. On the current sign that's working there is sufficient, however, it's getting old and is difficult to program. This new sign will be able to be remotely programmed from technicians, not having to leave their seat, not having to actually come in on days off. If there's a snow day, they have to come in physically and plug into the sign to change it. The next being a network video recorder upgrade. We're currently at capacity on that. The other day I sent an email request to all department heads asking to be vigilant in the views that they're using. Every time they connect and they look at a camera and they watch. That takes up one connection. We're currently at capacity of a thousand connections. So employees are all looking to see what's going on outside the doors. Whether they're safe to leave, is there a commotion in the hallway? They are given that. So we've asked them to be vigilant and do as much as they can in limiting their access, but we're still at capacity that needs to be upgraded. Our network storage, this is a hot topic in Michigan. Not even Michigan, throughout the entire United States. Every police officer that responds to a scene now has almost three four cameras on them at a time, two in their cruiser and one on their person. When they turn those into prosecuting attorney, that prosecuting attorney has four or five officers that might have responded to one incident. Those videos have to be retained depending upon the retention cycle. Could be lifetime. My lifetime, the device's lifetime, the case lifetime, the defendant, whoever, the victim's lifetime. We don't know what lifetime means. So to be able to curate that data and hold it, retain it, is becoming a big challenge. Because if we have a capital prior happen that we have to retain for life and we have seven to ten officers, that's thirty-five cameras that we have to hold all of that data. So we're increasing that network storage to accommodate something like that. That's gonna be more on the capital expense side later. We're holding it inside is becoming difficult. Because not only do we have to retain it, we have to share it with other people. And to share it out with other people is becoming a challenge. It's duplicated, it's hard media, and it's becoming to be expensive. So looking at an online solution for that in the future, so we don't have a capital request. But being that's only thirty-five hundred dollars this year, that's the smallest one. So twenty-two thousand dollars for workstations going forward. We're gonna continue to replace these computers in front of employees on a five to seven year schedule. That's become more aggressive into the five year schedule as Windows is taking out, Microsoft licensing is taking out. Not that it won't run on that computer, but they don't want it to. They want to buy it. So they're making us do that, which unfortunately is the nature of the beast. And also to form factor authentication, when every employee signs into the computer now, it has to go through a cell phone check or email code somehow. We plan on doing that through duo form, duo two form authentication. We already use it for a lot of applications, but now it's gonna be specific to the computer. That's a state mandate that we have to comply with. Those are the five things that I'm asking for in the capital side. Now, in our defense, I haven't asked for a raise for our technicians. I still have one position that I have not fulfilled, that that technician took a different job that we couldn't afford to match with pay. I had no fault in him leaving. He was a great employee. He loved us, but we just couldn't match what he was offered to go anywhere else. That's gonna start happening a lot more often. However, I'm grateful for the team that I have. I've talked to them. We've sat down and we realize where we live and what we do, and that's kind of our passion. We're definitely not the least, the most underpaid, but if we were to go to a private sector job, we could make a lot more. That being said, reducing the employee count is not an option for us. Simply because the more efficiencies we put into other departments, so they don't have to use as many personnel, is gonna require more interaction on the IT side. The more things we offer to the public, it's gonna require more interaction on the IT side. And furthermore, yeah, just the more, the more we offer, the more it's gonna require on the IT department. I had another really great thought, but I can't remember what it was. Anyway, is there any questions for me? Oh, I remember what it was. Services, services that we offer, we can't cut. Can't save money and reduce the budget by seven percent saying we're gonna cut email. That's not gonna work for this entire town. You can't get rid of email. We can't get rid of on-base document processing. We can't cut those down. They're there to stay. And until they, I guess they they go completely away, which I don't ever see happening. We can't reduce the amount of users. It's just, it's not an option.
I have a question. Of the reduction you mentioned, it was the, well, the first time you've had a reduction in capitals. You caught my interest, and I know you've talked about it in the past, moving from servers to cloud. Is that, from your perspective, is that a substantial reduction in cost?
It's a shift cost.
The shift in costs. So are they equal or?
Nothing ever goes down, sir.
What if it?
It might be a one-to-one cost shift, but in the future, that licensing is gonna continue to grow. So while as having an asset in front of you, you are stabilized in that cost for five to seven years, depending on the life and product. In the five to seven years that you're licensing that through something else on a capital expense model, it's gonna be more, in my opinion.
So is your shift to the cloud, is that for across the board for information storage? Or are you gonna retain some portion here at the county?
It's a great question. We've been a cloud-first strategy for a long time. If there's an option to host something in the cloud, we look at that first. Make sure it's secure, vet it. I don't think we've ever found a vendor that we didn't trust to have it in the cloud. And they've all been very vigilant and great to the point where now they know the questions we're going to ask before we ask them, so they have documents that they hand us. Like hand us to your CIO, who's gonna want this? And they check all the boxes, but yeah, cloud first is definitely something we're gonna have to do and offer more going forward because they don't even, some of them aren't even offering anymore. I know our BSNA application is something we need to look at in the next year or two. They're gonna stop offering support for the on-hosted, the onsite hosted license. So it's not even gonna be an option for us to have BSNA and take care of it ourselves. We're gonna have to pay them a monthly subscription instead of an annual and then move to the cloud.
And a follow-up question, Ian, is that I know we pay, we have substantial storage of records. From your perspective going forward, and I know this is a costly question most likely, in terms of electronic records, getting away from the paper. What's your thoughts on that in terms of moving the county? I know you've been doing it for quite a while. But it takes a lot of equipment, and we just addressed that issue here not too long ago. What are your thoughts?
Um, depending on the department. I know why we have a need for our building codes to scan in the blueprints that were previous to the provider we have now and get those digitized and get those records out. That requires manpower, whether we subcontract that. I have ideas on getting an intern that maybe we could help with that cost. There's an equipment cost to do that, to start that up, to get a scanner large enough. We can get that and get that paper out immediately, about immediately. As soon as it's scanned in, we don't have to retain it anymore. Whereas vital records such as the clerk has, there's directives by the state government, the federal government, that we have to keep a piece of paper. So until they tell us we cannot keep it, we have to. Now, that being said, I'm comfortable with it being stored electronically. I don't have any reason to believe it would go away. I think with the efficiencies that we have, not only on storing things onsite, the practices we have to back those up, retain them and cover them from disaster. With the cloud on top of that, I don't see us losing that data, or am I scared of losing that data? It's just the the different compliances we have to have per department. The clerk is just one. The prosecutor is another one that, depending on the type of case, the paperwork that goes through, the sheriff's another one, depending on the type of case, has to be purged after this amount. More than likely, it has to be retained if it's gonna be a capital or a bigger crime. So every, every department's different.
Yeah, thank you. No further questions.
Anything question?
Thank you.
Chairman, that was the only people that signed up who must be else, other department that wants to speak.
Good morning, Commissioner. Larry Zaff from the whole county. Just wanted to speak to you briefly regarding our two thousand twenty-six mosquito abatement. We have noticed there's a deficit there. Hopefully a hundred and seventy thousand. That deficit is intended for purchase of new equipments. Each, we are having some equipment that is getting very oblique. We have personnel that are fifteen to sixteen years old, as well as some of our truck drivers as well. We have a UTV that needs to be replaced that's twenty years old now. That amount in that deficit. My intentions are to use our fund balance to pay that deficit or to make those purchases with that amount. As you may or you may not notice, we do have a healthy fund balance. And we are upgrading the millage as well in August of two thousand twenty. That fund balance was a goal of mine to make significantly healthy. Two thousand twenty-six, this will be our twenty ninth year of operation of mosquito abatement. My knowledge, we've never had to ask our residents for a new increase. I think that's unheard of. I think that's outstanding, especially with the cost that we're looking at now, this time period that we're in. So it's my, it's my intentions to keep that on the balance there is also with our, our millage rate intact. It is so significant that we keep that there to push us through this next six-year millage cycle. I feel if we don't do that, we're gonna be in rough shape. But we do, we do have a significant unbalance there. I've sat down with Erica as well as Angie Daniels, our utilization director, as well as Ashley too. And looking at the numbers through this next millage cycle, I'm happy to tell you, I believe we're in good shape, or really good shape. We do have some needs in this next millage cycle. We need a, we need a new roof on our office building. That needs to happen in the next six years. As I said, our trucks are aging rapidly too, along with some other mosquito abatement equipment. But I'm, I'm happy to tell you that I, I think we can do this is, as long as we can keep those two things intact, I think we're in good shape. I, that's all I've got for you. If you have any questions for me.
Just for those who are attending, your fund balance appears to be a million and a half. And the red you're speaking of is a hundred and thirty-three thousand. So your concern overall is to of reducing the millage amount, is that what I was hearing?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. If we did if there's some way we could possibly keep that intact or right where it's at, I I think that would definitely push us forward and help us get through this next millage cycle.
No further questions.
Yeah, but so with that in mind, if these expenditures lose the equipment you're gonna need. But the revenue, are the revenues showing that that's gonna be reimbursed?
I don't understand the question.
You show, you show a hundred and thirty-three thousand deficit in his budget.
Right.
And if the expenditures are in the one million seven hundred and twenty thousand, are the revenues that are gonna be reimbursed, they're not showing that coming from the fund balance?
Correct.
That's not a clear picture, really.
So it's use of fund balance, it's budgeted use of fund balance. So if if I put it in as a revenue, that's kind of double dipping, it's showing the use of the fund balance. It's not a budget violation to be in a deficit as long as you have fund balance to cover.
Right, but it's not coming out of the general.
Correct. This is coming out of their own fund balance.
And my apologies for the confusion of the numbers, Commissioner. I just went off the last, no, no, last.
I just was reading the budget I had. No, you were, you were correct. Any other question?
Thank you for your time, Commissioner.
Anyone else?
Good morning again, commissioners. Just quickly. For the most part, our budget, I think, is basically status quo from last year with obviously the, the numbers that are not controllable, for example, the medical insurance and such. I think there was one request for an increase from Judge Thane for some attorney fees in family court. That's the only thing that I understand to have been outside of the status quo. And you know, normally I'm here asking for this or that, and clearly I can read the room, right? So I just wanted to address a couple of things. First of all, Erica was gracious enough to, to meet with, with Mrs. Long and I on Wednesday outside of her Thursday window because we were not available on Thursday to meet with her. So we had an opportunity to go through, get some clarification on some things that we had questions about, discuss the, the cost allocation and such. So I just wanna cover, there's, there's two areas that I'm not willing to budge on, okay? First and foremost, I don't wanna lay off any FTEs, and I, and I will not lay off any FTEs. So I, I wanna just clarify that. And I don't, I don't wanna go down this rabbit hole, but I do wanna, wanna remind you that every time the prosecutor's office increases their staff or the MIDC increases their staff or, or I mean, we have to bear, we have to bear that, Jody's office, through their constitutional obligations to the court have to bear that. So I think if you talk to any of your colleagues across the state, they're gonna say that the MIDC situation has greatly impacted across the board counties, even though I mean, the problem is that the state is putting a lot of money towards that. Our county is benefiting from that. But, but the other pieces of the court system are not receiving the same benefit. So it's kind of disproportionate what's going on. So just as a reminder, I mean, I'm not here, obviously, I'm not here asking for more employees, but we don't have employees to spare. So I just wanna make that clear. The second area that I feel super passionate about are the components of the courthouse security. And I just wanna there's some historical stuff that I just wanna cover because I think with the exception of Mr. Bardwell, nobody else was privy to the last two major changes to the courthouse security. Nobody else was privy to the last two major changes to the courthouse security. So there's, there's two components. There's the courthouse security, which is the security at the door. Which is covered through the sheriff's budget, okay? Now that's, this is a rough number, but I think it's been that way for about twenty years. Now this would have, this was implemented at the same time that the front of the court moved from Green Street to the courthouse, alright? So piggybacking on the CRP sixty-six percent reimbursement. Uh, part of the advantage of having the front of the court in the courthouse is that through those indirect costs. You get some reimbursement for that portion of the courthouse security. Okay, so when you look at that, you have to remember that there's, there's some, some contribution to that cost. From the, the various reimbursements through the indirect, indirect costs. Um, the second component of the courthouse security is. Uh, my bailiff staff, which I have two full-time bailiffs. And then we have, um, a contractual bailiff to fill in. As you know, we have three courtrooms, but. Uh, we've been able to make that work. That has been in place for, I think, roughly five years. That was a negotiation between the board and the court. Um, basically to, um, avoid a lawsuit. And at that time, um, Sheriff Scrant was the sheriff. And we had originally proposed that the bailiffs be full-time sheriff's deputies. There's a statute that upon my order requires the sheriff to provide. A deputy to, um, sit in on any court proceeding. So obviously. I didn't want to do that to him, but I was going to do it to him if I did not have. Um, bailiffs available for the, the court. And so, uh, that system has worked quite nicely. They are court employees. They are court employees because Sheriff Scrant did not want them to be sheriff's employees, okay? So that portion of the courthouse security is in the court budget. Which would be a general fund budget as well. So, um. And I don't want to, I also don't want to go into the long history of everything that's happened, but I can tell you. As, as, as late as yesterday morning. I was on the phone with Caro P D and the Sheriff's Department regarding. A potential threat to the courthouse, okay? It's, it's not a, it's not a like. Once a year or twice a year. It's a like, multiple times per week we're dealing with this stuff. And, um, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's the, it's the environment that exists right now. And so, um, I just, I just want you to understand that that. The, the way it is right now, I, I am not willing to negotiate that in any shape or form. Um. And I just wanted to also address, Jody kind of indicated with the, with the document fees and that kind of thing. Um, the court in the past, there is, there have been discussions about, well, if you increase. Court costs. I mean, a lot of, a lot of the court cost expenses are specific by statute. But there are somewhat, you know, there's a little bit of wiggle room. Um, but I want you to understand that, that it's really not a source of revenue. For the reasons that you've already discussed, you know, so, so if you want to increase the tickets or whatever. I mean, the citizens of this county are going to bear that cost. So. I, I, and we haven't really even discussed that, but I'm just saying that that's, from a public policy standpoint, it's really not. An actual source of, of revenue. Um. And, and the final thing I would say is if, if required, I would just ask that. It, the, the. Reductions be proportional. I, I mean, I understand, obviously, there's going to have to be things that happen. I just want, wanted to express. My kind of bottom line with a couple of those items that I am not willing to. Change. So, um, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
No, Judge, it's, it's remnants of two thousand eight. Uh, all over again, uh, I, I think, um, just saying.
I'm not as loud as Judge Jazin though, right?
Many other things related to Judge Jazin. He's having a great retirement, but, um. Uh, those all need to be considered. You are sole employer versus co-employers and. That's another subject for another day.
Right. And I hope we don't have to go there.
But anyway, I, I just wanted to bring that up and I know Clerk Fettin, you've been there as well and for all those who haven't. Feel there's some of the challenges that we face. And I do appreciate your proportion because that was initially. Uh, in two thousand eight. We don't want to go there unless we have to. But hopefully as we go through this and narrow down the options of it, is it six hundred thousand, we can avoid that. At this stage. Always appreciate your.
Thank you. And I just wanted to add also, I, I mean, I feel like since, well, I've now been the chief judge for ten years. Um, I feel like we've always tried to work with the board in a, um, all three judges. And I feel like we've tried to be, um, very effective stewards of the. The taxpayer dollars that are provided to us. And so I have no intention of changing that at this point. And I understand that you have a very difficult job here this year and, uh, just wanted to share those thoughts with you. So thank you for your time.
I appreciate it. Tyler, come on up.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Director Ray, Tuscull County Animal Control. Here to discuss, uh, the animal control budget as of right now. I'm sure you may know that, uh, animal control is funded by two main sources, that's transferred from the general fund as well as the dog license revenue. Um, and, uh, dog licensing is, uh, dog license sales are surprisingly low for this year, uh, the lowest I've seen in seven years. So, um, I've been, uh, exploring different, uh, methods on how to increase that revenue. Uh, one thing we started doing in, in November is, uh, sentencing. We are going door to door, um, throughout the county and, uh, checking for dog licensing or dog licenses. Um, and, uh, so far, we've started that about the second week of November. Um, and, uh, November alone had an increase of eight hundred dollars from November of twenty twenty-four. So, um, we're saying that a lot of dogs are not licensed in the county. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to get to the entire county before the end of the year. Um, but my goal is to, uh, to bring the dog license revenue back up to over a hundred thousand dollars for twenty twenty-six. Um, and if, uh, that's the case, then, um, I believe there could be a thirty thousand dollar reduction at the minimum from the, uh, general fund transfer. Uh, my only, my other, uh. Method that I'm using to increase that revenue is I did generate, or I did, uh. Get a QR generation or, or generated QR code for our county page linked to where. People can pay online. Uh, the vets that I'm working with in the county, um, have agreed to have basically a flyer on their, on their front desk. A QR code right there, um, when, when a dog owner goes into the vet clinic and gets a rabies shot. It's a convenience instead of driving all the way up to the shredder's office here to purchase a dog license, you can scan a QR code right there and, and purchase it online. So, um, I'm going to be, uh, shipping those out here, uh, before the end of the year and. Um, at the very least, if no one uses it, you know, at least we tried, it's at no cost to the county, uh, for that, that QR code. Um, and just trying to make another convenience. So people that live outside of Caro, um, purchase dog licenses in easier way. Any questions?
Any question?
Thank you.
Chairman?
All right. Well, thank you, Commissioner Cook, for leading us finance and, uh. Plugging us through that. And that was, uh, on the spot. We can maybe pass, pass to my lap. All right. So that concludes our finance and technology. Will we move into building and grounds? Is there anything to report on building and grounds? Director is saying nothing today, so we will move forward. We're going to go in the personnel. Is there anything? Chairman Vaughn isn't here. Commissioner Barrios, anything on personnel?
No, I, I have some, some thoughts and ideas that, uh, I would like to bring up to the, uh. Commissioners at some point in the future on, uh. Innovation or, I ca- I come from a background, I've got training in H R. I would like to, uh, kind of go over what we do and how we do what we do. Uh, not only with, uh, staff, but with new people coming on board in appointed positions. So it's just a topic for future.
Onboarding?
Pardon?
Was that part of like onboarding?
It could be.
Okay. Look for, look forward to your thoughts. You've been in H R a long time, as I know. Anything else? Oh, thank you, Commissioner Barrios. So that concludes the personnel. We're actually moving to any other businesses necessary? Somebody for the board? We'll move into now in the public comment period. We have. Pretty good, um, group here this morning. We always appreciate that. And especially that's public comment. But, um, just, uh, if you would like to provide public comments, uh. Please just state your name and the township that you're residing in, so we are familiar with that. And as I recall, it's a five-minute time limit, as I remember. And, uh, to, uh, have more than five minutes, basically the board would just have to nod in approval. So with that, some of those guidelines, I'd like to open up public comment. So who would like to be with first? Clerk Fettin?
Good morning again. I am just very excited. As I know, C I O Lee is probably just as excited. We've been up to fifty-nine virtual participants, and I think that that's something worthy of noting. Um, one, I think it's the importance of the topics that may be discussed during public comment as well as the budget. But to see a room full of people as well as fifty-nine people engaged virtually, I think that that is, um. A great thing to see our community engaged. So I don't know if you watch the numbers. I know the two of us do throughout the whole meeting. So, um, it's exciting to see that participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Fettin. Any questions? Thank you. Anyone else?
First of all, these chairs are very dangerous. I don't think you should have wheels on them. In high school, I would have been all over the place. Um, anyway, uh, I think I was back here November eighth. I'm not sure when the last meeting was, and I'm just going to give you guys an update on, uh, the, uh, road commission. Discussions, um, and their minutes. Um, I'm going to give this to the clerk because I'd like to add this to the minutes. Uh, doesn't reflect, uh, what I said on November sixth at the road commission. And I'm also going to, uh, submit the email I sent them and talked about on November sixth. And, uh, just got to go over you, with you guys really quick. Um, just so you know, the, the prep work I did behind this is M dot approved equipment. And an understanding of what the different intersections into Scola County need. Uh, all the intersections that are listed have had deaths in them. And, uh, I think this is something that's important that we take seriously. And what I've been running into, uh, with the five board members, which I think is the red tape that this community does not need. Is, uh, a study needs to be conducted. Um, I don't know when we should have a policy in, in, that is in, in place for a study when lives are being lost. There's no substitute for just getting it done. Um, the stuff that I've proposed, uh, also. Uh, has been cited that it has a cost to it. Um, the cost, uh, from different townships and also myself and my family. Would, uh, have, have been told and would be covered. Uh, so there is no cost to the county to get the minimum standard to save lives. The things that we've, uh, found out that is adding rumble strips. Uh, adds a twenty-five percent safety factor to intersections. Adding a, uh, solar light also adds another ten point two percent. Uh, in reducing accidents at intersections, uh, uh, and this study was in, uh, conducted in Iowa across the country. Um, the letter that I sent, uh, said as follows, this was November sixth. Uh, dear to Scola County Road Commission, as discussed in this morning's meeting, I am outlining an immediate action plan for several critical intersections requiring attention. Herd's Corner in Deccaville installed a red light and rumble strips, estimated budget seventy-eight hundred dollars. Bevins and Herd Corner add rumble strips, estimated budget forty-six hundred dollars. Herd's Corner and Forty-Six add rumble strips, estimated budget, uh, seventy-eight hundred dollars along with a solar light. Birch Run and M fifteen, they already have a light, add rumble strips, forty-six hundred dollars. Irish and Birch Run add rumble strips, forty-six hundred dollars. Please provide a status on these, uh, studies or progresses made to date. I'm requesting that these measures be implemented by December fourth, twenty twenty-five, at least to the minimum standard outlined above. If this timeline cannot be met, I expect a formal letter from your attorney explaining why with clear and specific, specific reasons. Additionally, I request to be added to the agenda for the next meeting on December fourth, either to discuss the proposed solutions. Or to review, review your formal response. During that meeting, December fourth, um, no response was given. Um, I got a sent to the letter and then a explanation that a study needs to be conducted. I had received no information on if a study was even, uh, implemented. I have no idea of a timeline. Um, and I come to you guys not with problems, but with solutions. Uh, not only are the costs covered, not only are townships willing to step in. And, uh, implement these things, but I have also been reached out from private sector saying, hey, when you're ready to do the work, we'll do it ourselves. Um, during the weeks to come, I am going to go around to the different townships and express to them, uh. My willingness to help them from my family to theirs. I don't think there's an excuse, uh, on any realm or any policy that should affect. Uh, implementing some minimum standards that reduce the cost of life in our county. Um. I'm appalled by the, the commissioners of the road commission. I've said it to their face and I'll say it behind their backs. And I think this red tape is stops there. Um, I do also give full approval to the supervisor, Mr. Green. I've not spoken with him, but I think he's very capable. Of leading the road commission into the futures. Um, and, uh. I listened to two hours of you guys talking about the budget, uh, just getting rid of those five individuals. Would save the community about thirty-three thousand, uh, plus insurances. Um, you guys can put that wherever you want. I'm sure the other departments would love to have a, a privy at that. Um, that's my, that's my speech. Uh, that's where we're at. And, uh, like I said, in the weeks to come, I plan, I'm visiting all the townships. That are affected and any other townships that would like to reach out and need help in that realm. So. That's my reporting. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Brandon Putman from Arlington Township. Anyone else?
Good morning. My name is Julie Matthews-Ack. I'm at Tusculla County Road Commission. Um, I would like to address a couple misconceptions that have been brought forward to us. And first off, it was brought forward in one of your meetings that Commissioner Young. Was told that he could be seen and not heard. Commissioner Young was treated with the most respect. And given any opportunity at any board meeting to speak his mind. And he did give us valuable information. We asked him every dime. He came in if he could address as to what's going on with you guys, and he brought back information. The same courtesy has been handed to Commissioner Barris at this point in time. You also had an issue about Mayville with, and the traffic speed in there. If you want a speed study done in Mayville, you have to have it come from the Mayville village itself. We cannot implement one unless it's requested, just to let you know. Boy Scout Road was brought up before us. This was addressed five years ago and we gave Indian Fields Township. Eight different things that they could do. things that they could do. They chose the one that best fit in their budget. At this point in time, it was brought up that we have not done anything. I contacted the township supervisor, Ray Rendon, and asked him, do you have a request to the road commission because you know you have to put it in if that's what your township wants to do? He said at this point in time, they were waiting for a grant still from Lisa McLean's office, I guess, a few years ago with the changing from Bill Campbell and what went on in the township. They had applied for a grant. It was approved, but somewhere the paperwork got messed up and it never went through. So at this point in time, he's waiting to reapply in spring. I did make a phone call to Lisa McLean's office that afternoon and left a message to please get back with us. And if there's anything that we can do to move this along, we'd be happy to address it. Now, I realize there's been a rash of accidents within Tuscola County. And the road commission is looking currently not at just one intersection, at all intersections, to see what we can do, if there's something that we need to do. The governor last Thursday made a statement here, and I would like to read part of this. She set up a special governor's traffic safety advisory commission. It was launched to reduce accidents by thirty percent. Thirty percent by twenty thirty. The statement was made by Inspector Patrick Dory. Mobile technologies are leading to more distracted driving crashes, and we see an increase in risky driving behavior such as excessive speeding, adding alcohol, drugs to the mix increases the danger for everyone on the road resulting in more crashes and fatalities. Just to let you know, I sent an email asking what can the road commission from here because of the accidents that happened in this county? How can we help? Can we get involved? Our county engineer is already signed up beyond this engineering committee as part of it. If you want, I can pass on all this information to you. I don't know if you have any idea what we do and what roads we have done. Last year, we replaced seventy-five pulverts, ninety local road projects. Five hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-four tons of HMA went down on forty point four-three miles a road. We put four hundred eleven thousand nine hundred thirty-four square yards of chip seal and replaced them on thirty-six roads. We put down sixty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-five tons of gravel and limestone. We have our budget before us. Commissioner Barris was at our meeting. We went through our budget. We do not have a deficit at this point in time. And if you remember a few years ago, when the retirements, all the municipalities got caught up in unfunded retirements, the road commission voted not to bond out anything. We tightened our belt. We did away with buying new equipment. We've refurbished. I do have the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, if anybody would like to look at it. And we just completed a safe road safety audit on Saginaw Road. This is it. This took from spring to now business. If you have any questions at all, the road commission would be happy to come in. Our goal is to be committed to our people. Any questions?
Mr. Bardwell?
Yes.
I have one. Um, it's been over a year ago. In Ellington Township, our township supervisor got with the county, filled out the paperwork for Birch Run Road and M-15. And I was part of that, and they said they had to do a study for Birch Run Road. I talked to MDOT. MDOT said they have nothing to do with Birch Run Road as a county road. County can do what they want with it. As long as they don't touch M-15, and they said there wasn't enough accidents. I disagree with that. There's accidents out there all the time. That's our county road. If we want to put rumble strips there, we should be putting rumble strips there. That has nothing to do with MDOT.
MDOTs roads are state highways.
That's right.
We are currently, we are currently doing a study on all of them, where it would work, where it won't work. We are looking at all of our roads and intersections. And we have a pretty good idea where we're going to be headed, sir. Okay.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I just have a comment. I have a comment.
Julie, Julie, Julie.
I'm sorry.
The
I can't hear.
I'm sorry, Julie. I'm a resident in Ellington Township, right on Hurd's Corner.
I know you are.
I remember it was a gravel road. They made it a Class A road from eighty-one to probably the cemetery. I don't know where it goes after that, what they did, but that's when they widened it. Since that time, it has been and has been accolade by the commander of the state police and others that there's been a significant increased traffic flow. Truck's another one. It doesn't take someone very long to determine it's become the I-75 that stretch of road. And when they hit the bridge, they're still going to that bridge. You can center your vehicle and you can get across there and make the curve. Unfortunately, what the public perception is, and I'm going to speak on behalf of the Putman family because they have spoken eloquently on the need, is that I don't know if there's been six, seven, or eight accidents at that corner.
Eleven.
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 All right, eleven. It's a travesty in that amount of time. Now, what's causing that? Well, we addressed the sheriff, we addressed the state police, and we've road patrol and the lack of officers and the lack of speed. Now, you don't have to go anywhere. You go down eighty-one, and if you have a heads-up display, you can see where you're being passed if you go on the speed limit prolifically. There's a problem with speed. But the truth to draw was, and I would really appreciate that, if you take down Hurd's Corner Road, there's a a mechanism that determines your speed before you hit that corner. I would have thought that the proper response would have been, but something there other than a speed that says you're going forty-five, fifty-five, sixty-five, or seventy that would alert people that corner's down there. Now, it's well marked. We think it's well marked. I don't know why people are missing it other than speed and distraction. But when we think about what Brandon has presented in terms of rumble strips, we're talking about lights, and they seem to be like as fast as layers of clay to get something done. And I know you've got your protocols, but the public perception after eleven, they've lost the patience. And so they've come to the board to dissolve the road commission. And you know that. And I'll be coming up, I'm sure. But that's what we're faced with. And then, of course, that opened up other issues, whether it be Boy Scout or things like that of that nature. So I wanted to comment on that from the board's perspective because I, and from I think you've got a real public perception issue of response time, especially when it relates to deaths and injury. Whether you do studies or not, there's some immediacy that needs to be taken to get attention. Whether that's short of a state police car with its lights flashing at the corner, something has to be done because eleven may not be the last. So I wanted I wanted to address that and to all those on the board here, on the road commission. We don't understand. And I'm not here to get an understanding. I'm only here to present that because in our forthcoming meeting, Chairman Vaughn returned the agenda, that item may be on.
I understand that. But you also, can I relate something back to what your board just recently had to do or not, sir?
This board's?
Yes. May I use one of your things as an example?
Sure.
Okay. You recently had to investigate one of your employees for an incident that happened nine months ago. You did a two-months investigation, then relieved that person of their duty. You need to let us be able to figure out what is the best fix for this location. Maybe it's rumble strips. Maybe it's a four-way stop. Maybe it's a flashing light, but we have to get all the data. We have not achieved all that. If there's eleven accidents, have they been PIs? Are they property damaged? Did somebody slide off the ditch? Did somebody get rear-ended? I don't have those answers, Mr. Bardwell, but I'm just saying we are in the process, believe me, of looking at that intersection along with other intersections within this county to alleviate accidents, hoping to hope you can't take away human error at the same time, sir.
Julie, I appreciate that. We're talking lives versus
I understand that, but I'm just saying, it's an investigate, I'm just saying, this is an investigation also. We are looking at the stats. We're looking at information what went on. Okay?
Thank you, Clerk.
Yep, thank you.
Can I just add something? Having attended the meetings, I know that these people, their intentions are are good. They don't mean any malice. My own perception is when you lose lives, that's a significant event. And I don't want people who live on that road to have crosses in their yard because we missed an opportunity. I think that's worse than having a rumble strip. They've talked about rumble strips and the the weather isn't something that cooperates with putting rumble strips down at this point in the year. But I've also mentioned those strips that they put down the center of the road where they grind down the road. And if you're going to pass a car, it kind of wakes up and you hear it. We need different sensory options. If you go down that road, that's a shortcut. My family all live in Lapeer, and we take Hurd's Corner Road every time we go. And one of the commissioners mentioned at their last meeting what a nice job Tuscola County does on their roads, that those roads are so great that people take and go down them and they they speed, but there's no bumps in them. They're great roads. So we do a good job. We've lost a lot of people. I don't want to lose anybody else. We see every time that there's something posted on Facebook about an accident, cars going out or trucks going out, they're going east of town. Is it Deckerville Road again? Is it Deckerville and Hurd's Corner Road? We hear that all the time. I see that. And I understand the road commission has to do some due diligence. It has to have reports and but they also have some flexibility. And I would just ask that as the elected representatives, and we've got good representation. We've got people from Basser and Carrow and Cassidy area. So there's a good blend of representation. And up until this serious rash of crashes, I think these people have been doing a relatively good job. We haven't been called out and had any issues. But I think there's, I don't know whether it's as people coming on board aren't well versed on what their responsibilities are, but county roads, I think you have some flexibility to be able to say and do what you'd like to do. And having a a study is great. I know Chairman Laurie mentioned at the last meeting maybe looking at some pilot programs. So you have some flexibility, and I hope that the road commissioners will look at that flexibility and implement things. I don't want to see another person hurt, whether it's on Hurd's Corner, whether it's up by Akron. Where we've had these accidents, it's horrific for the family. And spending thirty thousand dollars to put a rumble strip or a cut-in rumble strip, I'd like to see that where those are put into the ground. They're not as, they still make a racket. But I think we have to look at alternative sensory things. You can have all the signs you want. You can have the flashing lights. If somebody's not looking, if their mind is thinking about the meeting that they're having twenty minutes from now, they're not going to see those signs. But they might hear the rumble on the rumble strip. They might feel agitation on the road. It's just another option. My goodness, isn't that worth a life? I think it is. So I would just ask the road commissioners to look at flexibility and look at your options and seriously, it's heartbreaking.
Thank you, Commissioner Barrios. That's a good ending. Anyone else?
Good morning. My name's Isabel Putman. It's my dad Billy, by the way.
I am so proud. Thank you for correcting that.
Absolutely. I've been on this journey with my dad, seeing firsthand from the accident to now, the non-urgency of the road commission. We did the research for a little bit, brought it to the road commissioners' attention that something needs to be done. Came with a problem and a solution and how to pay for that solution and no response. For me, that's like, I have to drive on that road to school every day with my five sisters. It puts a fear in me that if lives on a road isn't going to put a fear into the people that are in charge of it, what else is, like, what else am I missing? Anyway, so we went to, we brought it to their attention, gave them solutions with money. Multiple townships reached out to them. Wells Township, Ellington Township, in an email saying they'd pay for the road, the rumble strips, the lights, everything, no response. We asked at the last meeting or the meeting before that road commission meeting, why there was no response, no response for them. The last meeting we went to, I asked the question of what, how are they, what study are they doing? And only one person on that board spoke the whole entire meeting. I asked how they were doing it. A study's being done. That's the same answer we got the whole entire meeting. A study's being done, a study's being done, a study's being done. If, just from my standpoint, I'm nineteen, I'm not really into this kind of stuff, but if eleven, twelve accidents happen on a corner, is that not enough? Like, what's enough to be able to make a change? I don't understand what the problem is that we can't put something to help. It's paid for. It's MDOT approved. I don't see the problem other than the lack of due diligence of the, not the road commission, the road commission's doing great, but the people on the board. Somebody asked at the last meeting if they've been to a commissioner meeting in the last year, and from what I remember, the answer was no. And now, all of a sudden, when their jobs are on the line, they're here defending themselves. Again, the lack of due diligence and the ineffectiveness of the road commission board members, I think, is something that needs to be considered a lot deeper than the road commission in itself. Another evidence, I guess, Wells Township submitted a work request form on September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five for a request for traffic speed study. And as of December fourth, nothing has been done. That's three months of nothing. No update, nothing. Again, I'm just stating what I've seen firsthand of this event to bring it to you guys to really consider what the people on this board are doing and what they're actually being paid for, because in my eyes, they're not doing anything.
Thank you, Isabel. Anyone else?
Good morning.
My name is Elizabeth Rowman. I live in Indian Fields Township. I grew up in Ellington. I grew up on Hurd's Corner. When was the dirt washboard? I remember the cars going down there at fifty-five mile an hour. Makes me wake up. Something like that needs to be done by the sub sign. In the time I lived there, I started, I was a baby. There were accidents there when it was still a dirt road. Just because it's paved doesn't make it any different. The eleven accidents have been since September? From what I'm hearing, that's just eleven since September. How many were before that? Has anybody looked into that? That's just my question. I'm also a commercial truck driver. The commercial trucks going down that road are doing sixty, seventy, eighty mile an hour. Promise you they are. Seen it, watched it, terrified by it. Something needs to be done about that. I mean, I understand we have a lot going on with the truck drivers, with people that are not here and have a legal license, and they can't read or write, and they don't and they can't read or write and they don't understand what the signs are saying. That's a totally different thing. This is about the accidents at that corner. People not paying attention. Something not, something we're not doing is not helping them pay attention because convenience has come into our lives and we don't pay attention. We as leaders of our community need to step up and say, if you're not going to do this, we need to do this ourselves. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Elizabeth, can you spell your last name for me?
R-E-I-L-M-E-N.
Oh, I can strike. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, yes?
I'm Laura Boyke Haas. I'm in Ellington Township. I'm on the board. Um, I have gone to the last four or five road commissioner meetings and I haven't gone to them before that, before Pupman's this accident, this crash that happened. I, um, the, the part I'm asking all of you is who are these people accountable for? This board is accountable to somebody. I mean, I'm a taxpayer. I'm in this county. We go to this board meeting and it is total disrespect. When Billy's up there talking and pointing to them, they have absolutely no respect for anything that we say. Any questions, they don't answer questions. Um, it is crazy. And I thank you for going to all the meetings that you have, you know, and stuff, because somebody needs to take care of this problem. They sit with their backs to, you know, half of them sit with their backs to them. They don't answer any questions. Total disrespect. And, um, the money that they receive, you know, the, the road commission is one problem, you know, one thing. But all the other townships in the, in the thumb, you know, the, the people in the thumb. Tuscola County is a joke. As far as snow removal, we're the worst. You know, anybody else I've talked in Huron County, I asked about their rumble strips, how they ever got it done. They had no problem. They've got them all over the place. People get killed, you know, and stuff and, and they're taking care of it. Our board does nothing except disrespect us. And all I'm asking for is some kind of, some kind of accountability for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Private Tuscola County business owner. Anyways, uh, what has brought me to this meeting for the last six months is you guys, is that road commission way prior to this huge tragedy. I'm not a public speaker, don't want to be. And, uh, but you guys know, most of you know, you don't, but this is why I've been sitting and attending for the last six or seven months. Purely because of the disgrace they give the public. It is a horrible organization. Those people are as cold and as dead fish as you can see. You would rather be in front of anybody else but them. And he is a very public, great speaker for them to read engineered, uh, apologies or whatever you even want to call it. It's horrible what I've witnessed there. I hope for none of you to have to see what Nancy has had to see. It's terrible. It's sickening. I hope we can fix it. Definitely needs resolved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joanna Sanders-Lin Carroll, City. I went to the last couple of board or, um, road commission meetings, um, that I could attend according to my schedule. And they are very ineffectual. It's like watching a ping pong match. Because two of them speak and it's like, did you do anything there? Well, did you do anything there? Did you do anything there? Did you do anything? Nothing gets done from what I can see. Now, I haven't been to all their meetings, but I did listen last time where a couple of people from Boy Scout Road are going, it's been five years. What are you doing? I don't know. What are you doing there? What are you doing there? It's a comedy show of ineffectual people doing nothing. The guy who takes them, um, doesn't really take the minutes. He makes the minutes, but he doesn't take notes about the minutes there. He's supposed to answer the emails. He said, well, I forward them on. There are people in the gathering saying, you never answered my email. You didn't answer my email. He goes, no, I don't answer the emails. I just forward them on. People don't feel like they're being heard. Got people coming in with solutions. Now, my question is, if, if there's a accident and there's triage, do the doctors go, oh, they're bleeding profusely. Well, let's do a study to see how long they can last. Because Julie says, we need seven years of data. How many of your friends and family and neighbors and community members do you want to lose over the next seven years while they collect data? I understand having the right solution for the problem. She says, there are all kinds of accidents. The problem is we're losing people and let's do something. First line of defense, stop the bleeding. Okay, you can't put a rumble strip in this time of year. Do something else because you might be saving a life. And then I listened to all the financial stuff. I wonder how much it costs for emergency services to run out there in mass because there's been another accident. Does the county bear some of that? I think we do. Let's put in, let's pay for it themselves. They're willing to do the work. It's not just Ellington Township or, um, Ellington, right? You think I would know that? Cause I grew up out there around the corner from Mr. Bardwell. I have family that travels those roads, but I also have families that travel Burcher Run Road. I have people on Boy Scout Road. You know, this is our county. It's ours. And we're waiting around for somebody else to solve the problems. When we have the means and the understanding, the studies, except for seven years of data to get this done, do something. And not just for Hurd's Corner Road at Deckerville of Beavins. I mean, these are small, small things that can be done. And I do believe I heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the road commission has a, a hefty balance that they can work with, that they can do something with. I think the residents and people that travel our roads need to see something being done. Not just the platitudes that I witnessed, sitting there watching them ping pong the issues back and forth. And I really appreciate Ms. Nancy here for being there because she was representing you guys and she was taking notes. So she could come back and respond to you and tell you what was going on. I listened to the road commission. Nobody could even hardly respond because it's like, oh, I don't know. I don't know. It's understudy. Well, what have you done so far? Was one of the questions to the engineer. I don't know his name. And he goes, well, there's lots to do. It's understudy. Have you checked anything off the list? Well, no, no, not really, not really. And what he said is, well, probably 25%. But he couldn't tell you one single thing that he's done in a month. Not one on that list. That people were so desperately hoping something would happen. Couldn't tell you. I think they need to be overhauled. I know they come under your, your purview. I'm asking the board to take a serious look and reduce their ability to not get the work done that they're required to do to serve the people of Tuscola County.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I like, I'd just like to mention something. Initially, when, when you asked if I had anything for the personnel committee and I talked about, um, you know, having, coming from a background in training and, one of the things that I noticed, and it's true here, I'm sorry, but it's true here and the board as well. You assume people know things that they don't know. And these people that were elected, they were elected by populist vote. They got their positions. I don't think they've had orientation to know what all is being done. And I stayed for that whole meeting. Um, everybody left when it came to the point where they were talking about budget and projects. I stayed for the whole meeting. And at the end of that meeting, there was, there was some discussion about communication and responsiveness. And that was one of the things that I brought up to the, um, road commission before. Uh, I brought a letter from Guilford Township that they read at their November meeting. They wrote it in October and they hadn't had a written response. Part of the problem is the road commissioners go for their meetings, but I don't know how involved they are on the day-to-day operations of the road commission duties. When a letter comes in or an email comes in, what happens to that email? And they talked a little bit about that. Oh, well, I get it and then I forward it on to whoever it's most appropriate for that person to respond to. But the ultimate end result is Guilford Township didn't get a response back to their letter. They got a personal visit after the November meeting. And the representative Brent, uh, talked to the township supervisor. But the rest of the township board didn't get that unless the supervisor goes back and tells him. So they, they're hearing, they're beginning to pick up on things that, well, there's a little flaw here because we need to have in place something where if an email comes in, somebody says, hey, we got your email. Hey, we're looking into it. These people are finding that out. We talked about that. And one of the representatives at the end of that meeting said, you know, hey, we need to do something about that. When something comes in, we need to get back to them. They talked about updating their, their website and, you know, sometimes some websites have automatic responses. Thank you for your, you know, response or your, we'll get back to you. So they're, they're looking at that, but everybody that was at that meeting left and they didn't hear that. Chairman Laurie also mentioned about looking at a, a potential pilot program with a solar light. And they were looking at that and, and, and talking about that. I don't believe that these people have bad intentions. I think, I don't know if they've ever, have you folks ever even seen this book? I'll bring you a copy. Um, this is the only copy I've got. But I'll, I'll make a copy of it, uh, when it comes to road commissions for you so that you at least have that information. Because from what it says there, you've kind of got some flexibility to be able to manage and do things. And I don't think whoever, when a person is hired or appointed for a position, I don't think we do a good enough job giving them the tools that they need to do to do that job effectively. My opinion. I'm just one of the people sitting up here. But I can tell you, I'll give you an example. You want to have a chuckle. When I came on board, one of the first things I got was my little key card. Okay, got a key card from Ian. Gave me my key card. And we're assuming, oh, she knows how to use a key card. Well, I walk up there and I'm hitting the key card on the doorbell and it wouldn't open. I was having a heck of a time. So Ian had to finally come over and say, oh, well, you know, here, this is what you do with it. You're hitting the doorbell. You can't assume people know things when they start up into a position or whatever. Don't assume. I learned that in training. You always assume people don't know and you start and you work up. Tell them what they, you know, tell them what they need to know. Remind them. If nothing else, it's a reminder. But I think we don't do a good enough job letting people know what their duties and responsibilities are when they get into positions and we assume they know. And quite often they don't. But I don't believe these people are intending on being hateful or mean. It's, you sit on some of our meetings, what do we do? We do the same thing. We sit here and people sitting in the audience think, well, what's going on there? They're just, you know, yeah, 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 what? You know, it's, it's the same thing. That's just how, that's how meetings go, but. I think we need to do a, somebody needs to do a better job getting people information.
I got one comment. I, I say this, these are our county roads. When I talked to the MDOT supervisor, he said, we have no jurisdiction over what you do with your county roads. The way I see it, our county roads, we want rumble strips, we ought to be putting rumble strips out there. End of story.
And so we need to tell that.
No, that board needs to come here. We need to tell them, hey, this is what's going to happen. Not, oh, we got to do your study. They did that study supposedly for me. They said, well, there ain't enough accidents out there and we don't put rumble strips in Tuscola County. Really? That's, that's unacceptable. That's very unacceptable. They're our county roads. We should have to say what we want to say with it.
Just go ahead. You have a comment? Well, I tried to profit. I'll just comment. I, I know you're a new commissioner and I certainly hope your onboarding was very good, except for the, uh, getting in with the doors. We can improve on that.
Yeah, that was hilarious.
Seriously, um, the board of commissioners, they have no oversight of the road commission, except in wages and benefits. They get the same wage and benefit as the board. Outside is making, outside of that, making decisions, training and all that, that's all done within their responsibility. As I understand it, someone could refer that back to me. That's the way it's been. And so we have only influence. And our influence really is not brought out in any degree unless there's an impact of 11 accidents or something is the citizens of this county, all of a sudden are becoming concerned. Not only for that, but then you hear about all the other corners. You have a plethora of corners or roads and among many other issues. At one time, and I'm, I'm just repeating this from the past and Clerk Fettig would know this, that we appointed the board. And we made sure that they represented just as they are today from different corners of Tuscola County and not just in Carroll or Basser or Ellington or whatever. And the question came back to our former, one of our former control administrators, Mike Holwood. A great guy, especially the, from the financial perspective. I've learned to appreciate all the years that the, that we went through finance, we went through finance training. You'd love that. That was eye-opening. But regardless, at that time, Mike wanted nothing to do with the road commission. And so the chair at that time, Chairman Peterson, I believe it was, around that time, uh, and the board decided to let the public decide who the road commissioners are. And this is when there was a, some legislation going through about road commission, whatever. And that's how it became the board, lengthened its responsibility in terms of board members. So you lost that check and balance opportunity. So today there is no, um, organizational structure that would involve the county, except in prices. Or except if the road commission would be financially insolvent. Then it comes back to the county. And that's why the pension came back to us. So with that said, I think what's being conveyed here is a concern of attention and ability to react. And as Commissioner Lutz had said, you know, this is Tuscola County. We, it's our county. And we should be able to make decisions that benefit the people. And this is not the contrary. It's just, I wanted to give you a little pause there in terms of the training because it's not a responsibility as far as I'm concerned. Not at this point. Uh, that should have been done internal and the, the current board has been seated for quite a while. So if you didn't learn in the beginning, you'd get it by osmosis by now. So I just wanted to chime in a little bit with Commissioner Lutz's, uh, comments that, uh, it's sort of where we're at today. And with that, are there any, I'll move on now. I had my speech. Is there any other comments you'd like, anyone would like to come and comment before the boards? Does it have the information?
Mr. Bardwell?
Yes, that's Chairman Vaughn, I think.
Yeah, I see. I'm gonna try to get through this a little bit. I'm not talking very good.
It is. You recognize?
Okay, um, I'm, I'm not getting much of much out of the road commission. Everybody understands where I'm at there. The only thing, the only thing I will say is we do, you know, we've always allowed, we don't have say-so over the road. Because we've allowed it to be that way. We, we've got, we've got statute that clearly tells us that we are the executive board through that board. So we do have oversight on them. We never took that advice or we've never done it before. But, but we do have oversight. It depends where we want to go with it. So I, I just, I can, I can bring a statue on that too. But, um, I said, I said, and listened to everybody and everybody knew my position has not changed. But I just wanted to touch on that for a second. I want to run back to what was said really during the meeting on, uh, finances and stuff like that, if I could real quick. You know, we're talking about cutting, you know, 6%, 7% or whatever it may be in the, um, or whatever may be in the, um, you know, which is, which is something we got to look at. But, you know, we need to look at other things too. Um, like I've been working with Angie over there. Look at that credit card policy and stuff. You don't believe what we spend in credit cards every year. If you look at that policy, there's savings there that I think the board needs to look at. You know, before we start going after, uh, people's budgets, let's look internally for stuff. Uh, just water coolers in every department that we give Midwest Rotary every month for, for water, you know, just stuff like that we all looked at. And I think we need to start there and look at that kind of stuff, that stuff that we can control, that really affect anybody too awful much, but I think it's something that we need to look at. Uh, we haven't talked about unfunded mandates yet. Um, I don't know if there's anything in there we really want to go touch or anything, you know, um, or do, but, but I think there's other things that we can look at internally. Just a little waste here, waste there, which is twenty-five thousand here, twenty-five thousand there, twenty-five thousand there. I think all that needs to be looked at.
Commissioner Vaughn. Oh, you're all done. Go ahead.
I, I yield back to you, Chairman. I'm trying to get to you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Vaughn. There's, you've got a lot of, of what you've said, you've covered a lot of breadth and, and appreciate your thoughts. All right, we have Mr. Monta.
Yes, it's me, Elmer Township Supervisor, Jim Monta. Um, yeah, we had some incredibly deep tragedy locally with, I'm sure grief beyond any of our comprehension. And, and that hurts my heart. Um, but I think it was some fifteen years ago, maybe, maybe you remember that. Uh, back when I was living as the county commissioner. And that whole, across the state, that third world in the toilet where county commissions could oh, take over the road commission. And as I recall, most of the counties flushed that one. And I, I don't feel we have a bad road commission. Every time I've wanted some presence at one of my board meetings, Brent and Will are out there and willing to work with us. Um, and I'm not arguing that things wouldn't change and improve and, I don't know. Uh, but to say that the county board of commissioners ought to take over the road commission, I think is a little bit premature and knee-jerk. I, I hope that we can get some improvements made. Heavens knows, since time has passed, improvements have been made in our intersections and, um, I, I don't know where the line is, but you know, I, I don't know that we need motion detectors and flashing lights or strobes or whatever, but I'm sure improvements can be made as the board can move forward and, and allow for it. But I, I think we have a pretty.
Thank you, Jim. Is there someone virtual?
Oh, it was Mary Dryer. I think she was unmuted. Mary, would you like to address the boards? Yes.
No. Well, at least not at that time. All right, uh, anyone else?
I'd like to speak.
Mary Dryer?
Yes, I've covered the commissioners now for over forty years. And my personal opinion is you guys should look to yourselves. For several years, you did not have insurance. And then a few years ago, you voted for each of you to have insurance. I'm just questioning, does each of the commissioners who take insurance really need that? I think you really need to take a look at that issue. That is a large amount of money that is being paid out for insurance. And most of you already have full-time jobs outside of being commissioners. But the contention was when it was changed, you all worked forty hours a week or more as a commissioner. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mary. Anyone else? No one else? Asking once, voice. All right, let the record show that we offer public comment at the end of the video, the whole we did receive. We really appreciate all the comments. Uh, I know some were, were difficult to, to present, but at least I think in our hearts and minds, we all want to do the right thing. And that certainly is to, to reduce the number of accidents in Tuscalo County in any way that or form we can. And we know we have the services to do that. We just hope and pray that we get something done before the next accident. If it, which we, none of us will know when that would occur. So with that said, I've lost my screen. Moved by Commissioner Cook and supported by Commissioner Luce that we adjourn this meeting today. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And with that, we thank everyone who's joined us virtually and in this room. We thank the time you spent. It's been a long morning and we look forward to, uh,